A meeting of. City Council. Please, council members and staff, please mute yourself and when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting. And this meeting must comply with executive order and twenty nine twenty and all the other provisions of state law. And now the city clerk will announce the public comment process.
Okay, this is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov. As no breaks will occur between agenda items. Please note in the subject line, the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by the city clerk or staff for up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, cellphone app, or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raise hand feature on the desktop phone app or press star nine on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And City Clerk Kelly, please take the roll.
Councilmember Agiri.
I am here.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Labor Gonzalez here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Fisher here.
Mayor Protem Spriggs.
Spriggs here.
And Mayor DeDina.
DeDina here. Thank you, everyone. And now Mayor Protem Spriggs will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Spriggs. And now I'd like to invite each council member as a. To speak in the orders you typically see on the dial, starting with Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And hi, everyone. It's good to be back after a long break. There's quite a lot going on in the last few weeks that we were off, but I'll try to be brief. On July ninth, I attended the Sandag Board Meeting as MTS's representative. There's been ongoing discussion about regional transportation plan. There's also a project labor agreement that was discussed and approved. And then July fifteenth and July twenty ninth, I attended both the MTS Executive Board Meeting and the MTS Board Meeting. Where we approved a contract with Intercon for public securities because they have a very strong record when it comes to use of horse. And then on July thirty first, I attended the MTS fortieth anniversary celebration and. Along with Mayor Gloria and Mayor Mary Salas and several other council members, including the councilwoman from Tijuana. I'm sorry, not the councilwoman, the mayor from Tijuana, Carla McCarlin. And it was great. It was at East Street Trolley Station and a lot of food and gifts were given out. And then yesterday I had the pleasure of attending the national night out with several of my council colleagues and it was an amazing time. It was really great to see everybody enjoying themselves. And that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labor Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. It's very nice to be back. On June eighteenth, I attended the Bay Shore Bike Way Working Group Meeting. And the attendees were Josh Clark from Sandag, Marcus Bush, who is the new chair and the National City Councilman. As well as Greg Cox. So Greg Cox is retired, but he committed that he will be still involved. And we can utilize him as a resource because he's very interested in seeing the remainder of the six point five miles. To complete the Bay Shore Bike Way. He had been working on that for a long length of time. And it's pretty awesome to have him still as a resource. Also, what we discussed during that meeting is upcoming bike event, which is going to be held here in IB. The twenty second of August is the scavenger hunt. And then the September nineteenth is the community walk, ride, and roll, and that's sponsored by IB Active. And the San Diego Bike Coalition. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great. Councilmember Fisher.
Good evening, everyone. Really not a whole lot to report as far as official assignments. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Spriggs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a fairly quiet period, but a long period. So there are a few things I'll just touch on quickly. The Leadership Committee of the Coastal Cities Group of the League of California Cities, which. Is composed of six members from each of the six districts, Coastal Commission districts up and down the coast. Including the San Diego Division, which where I'm the representative on the Leadership Committee. We met twice during the period on the seventeenth and on the seventeenth of June and the nineteenth of July. And in both of those sessions, we're basically. Preparing for a webinar that took place on the twenty third of June. That was very successful. On the twenty third of June, that webinar included as the principal speaker, Jack Ainsworth, who's the Executive Director. Of the California Coastal Commission. And he attempted to address a number of the concerns that coastal cities have been raising. For a considerable period of time and also answered questions. And it's apparent that there are a lot of areas of agreement, but there are some really fundamental. Challenges that we continue to have, including. The fact that the Coastal Commission apparently is going to seek. Official regulations or legislation that memorializes their interpretation of the Coastal Act. That defines existing development as being January first nineteen seventy seven. Anything after that, which is probably close to the majority of the value of California's coastline. I need special permission to seek protection, hard protection like sea walls, et cetera. Essentially making this a very difficult matter for cities to adopt their own unique. Adaptation plans to meet their conditions. So that's something that we're looking at as a major strategic effort to address through lobbying legislation, et cetera. On the seventh of July, the League of California Cities Board met here in San Diego. In an in-person meeting, which I had considerable reservations about, but attended anyway. The purpose of the meeting was largely to discuss new governance procedures for the league. To make it more democratic, more inclusive, and to address diversity concerns. On the ninth. I attended our super district one supervisors' open house, Nora Vargas. She's also Vice Chair of the County Board of Supervisors. On the fifteenth and sixteenth. The League of California Cities Board actually had their, their board meeting. The other meeting I referred to is actually a. A special workshop. And that board meeting adopted the governance changes that were proposed by staff. To make, as I said, make the league more democratic and inclusive. Then tomorrow, the Metro. Metro JPA Wastewater Commission begins its meetings again after being dark in July. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. It was great to see everybody last night, the night out. Want to thank our, our public safety staff and all our staff. Courtney and Shannon especially for helping make that happen along with, I know Erica played a large role in that as well. So thank you. I'm sure I missed lots of the staff that helped plan it, but it was really great to see you. And thank you, Jack and Matthew and Paulam. I think you're appreciated seeing you guys there. Very, very nice event. Um, so lots of stuff going on in July, but just. Sandag had a big meeting, talk about getting public input on the regional transportation plan. So that was good. Lots of feedback on that. So it was good, a very, very long meeting. And then we chaired the Borders Committee meeting on the twenty third. Which was actually pretty cool. We had folks from Tijuana talking about cross-border bicycling efforts. So that's something Sandag's really been pushing on. So. That'd be great. And I know that's something the Sandag Bike Committee will be dealing with. And really important getting that bikeway through IB down to the border. So that'll be cool. And then hopefully to Tijuana. And then efforts that Tijuana to build a, a train, a commuter train, which would be really good. So. All kinds of cool stuff designed to reduce all the air pollution on the border. And then today, Chris Helmer and I met with virtually with officials from Region Nine of the EPA in Washington. And they presented their three alternatives that they're going to be presenting, the big alternatives for addressing the sewage issue. Alternative one I is the one that we're really pleased with. It's our comprehensive sort of moonshot. To address sewage, having responded to all the comments, especially from all our city of IB and all our local partners. In terms of addressing beach pollution and canyon, and then obviously Tijuana River Pollution. So that was really good to see that. And, and, and they're going to need our strong support on that. There'll be another public meeting on Friday. But it's definitely really great to see that the EPA really did listen to local stakeholders. And, and really address concerns about doing something that would fix this in a comprehensive way on both sides of the border. Then Salvador Lopez from NAD Bank, the North American Development Bank, who's kind of the US EPA's partner on helping spend and money on. Sewage infrastructure projects in Tijuana, give an update on a lot of the improvements that Mexico has been making on south the border, which are actually pretty good. I would hope. That we can get Mexico to provide a formal update on that. So people can see they're actually making progress because I think. People are losing a lot of hope on that. So that was really positive. But definitely some significant investments. And what they even fixed. A canyon that had been dumping two million gallons of sewage a day from a housing development. So they took that out of the river. So it's really clear that. You don't have to spend huge amounts of money to actually make a significant difference in reducing sewage flow. So. I really am glad to see that approach, at least in Tijuana. They have a lot more to do, especially on the discharge of beach pollution, which is really killing us. But. Anyway, I think we're moving forward. I think the key thing now is to make sure that we continue to focus on getting them to deal with emergency efforts. So we don't have to wait three years for. The flows to stop. So anyway, with that, and then finally, just the focus in Tijuana, definitely, they are very interested in water reuse is something we have to continue to push. That we have to, you know, the fact is that they use all the reuse all their water, then there's nothing going into the ocean. So. That's something that we have to push on. So good news in theory, good proposal. But it doesn't help us when the beach is polluted and we've got pollution that's affecting our residents. So. Anyway, with that, I will turn it over to Community Development Director Foltz, who has an announcement.
Hey, Mayor, could I get just a quick go back if you don't mind?
Yeah.
You know, one of the things I forgot to mention, it's not necessarily part of my direct responsibilities, but I attended the fiftieth anniversary of the Boogie. On the weekend of July tenth and eleventh, and the organizers of the event praised the city of Imperial Beach. For doing the proclamation, we were the only city in Southern California to do so. And I just wanted to share that with everybody and the significance of it. And. It was a great weekend, some great waves, some old friends, and a lot of, a lot of good memories were made by all. So I just wanted to thank everybody for participating in that.
Well, you know, thanks, Jack. I wish we had, it'd be, you know, good. I wish somebody could find all the really high-res photos of that. The whole bodyboard movement in IB because, you know, I think you and Councilmember Paulam are part of that, just, you know, world-class ripping and shredding. I don't know, those guys don't, men and women don't seem to be on the water as much anymore. So, you know, I think it's the last twenty, thirty years, you know, really amazing stuff that was going on. Really impressive. So it'd be great to really document that, but I'm really glad to hear that. That's awesome. A very important part of IB culture. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Um. And I'm sorry, Community Development Director Foltz, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. This is just to inform the council and the public that there's going to be a public workshop in Veterans Park on August seventeenth. At five PM, and that's to get input on two items. One is on accessory dwelling units to help us as we. Prepare a ordinance on that matter. And the second item is to get feedback on recreation programs. And this feedback's going to help us as we build our Parks and Rec Department. So again, that's on August seventeenth at five PM in Veterans Park. And following that announcement, City Manager Hall also has an announcement.
Thank you, Tyler. Hey, this is City Manager Hall. Mayor, I wanted to let you know that staff has been contacted by Councilman Fisher, who is requesting that. The consent item number twelve be removed from the consent calendar placed at the end of the agenda to discuss the date of the retreat.
That sounds good. Do we need to put, we need to put that on, make a motion to do that? Is that correct?
We will at the time of the consent agenda. I just wanted to give you heads up because it was, that was kind of a last minute request.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just lost my place in the agenda. Hold on. And now we need to do public comments. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Great, go ahead.
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will begin with members of the public participating through Zoom. So members of the public, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand option on the desktop. Phone app where press star nine on your telephone. You will be called upon in the order received. And I see a couple of hands here. And I will begin with Leah Goodwin. Please proceed. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Leah Goodwin. I'm calling on behalf of myself and Shirley Nakawata say to. Just kind of give you an update that Sandcastle City is happening August thirteenth through the twenty second. We didn't feel it was prudent to have a festival. But we couldn't let another year go by without celebrating with the Sandcastle. So IB Posse will be creating a very large, larger than ever before. Monument Castle, August thirteenth through the twenty second down at Pier Plaza. Special thank you to Andy Hall. For considering, you know, that this is actually will be fine. There's no event around it. It just will be an event itself. Watching him, watching them build it. We imagine around the eighteenth, maybe we can have a little bit of a hello session. When, when there's something to look at other than a big forum. And the kids and castles will be having a small. Competition on Saturday at Dunes Park. So I just wanted to just let you guys know this. I sent the flyer. I think you already know, but I wanted to just say, we hope. That you'll watch this Sandcastle in the making as we just celebrate Sandcastle City and we're using our. Community enhancement funds from the county of San Diego for this and hoping to be back in our usual form in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Ron Remlanger. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Oh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
There we go. Hello, all. I want to make sure that you guys are aware of, I'm the property owner of a new duplex here at seven twenty-four and seven twenty-six Second Street. Right behind the seven eleven on the corner. And I'm not sure if you guys all received the emails I've been sending to Sandra and Sam, who would be code enforcement. And Sandra, I believe she works directly with the mayor. Do you recall if any of you've gotten any of my police reports or emails that I've been sending to you guys?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Remlanger. We did. I, we did receive those. Thank you.
Wonderful. Aware of what happened on Friday, the sixteenth about the house being broken into. With my tenant in there, she's a lady whose husband's in the Navy. Who happened to be on a deployment in the middle of our ocean protecting us all. And the house was broken into by a homeless drug-infested person, shall I say, and I'll keep it at that. Toward the inside of the house up pretty good, shook her up to pieces. And I have, I've only been in the city a little over about a year and a half. And I have fallen in love with your city. I have a serious problem with the seven eleven here on the corner. And I have been all but begging the city to get involved about putting a fence to block. The back section and clean that section up behind that seven eleven. I have spoke to the owner of the property who's owned it for many, many years and could basically tell me to go fly a kite. And I've had Sam on it. And the last email I got from Sam was about a week and a half ago was call her if it gets real dirty back there. Call the police if there's homeless on the street. But nothing really done to help me get that place cleaned up. Which you all know, if that place gets cleaned up, it'll put a very, very brighter spot on the city. And I just need everybody's help to try and get this place straightened out. And my biggest concern right now is getting the back of the seven eleven cleaned up, repaved, and some kind of sliding gator fence put back there. To keep the homeless from doing their business and ordering back there.
Are you done, Mr. Remlanger?
I am.
Thank you so much. And, you know, just for public comment, we can't really have a dialogue, but I know that I already communicated to the city manager to make this a priority, but we'll follow up to make sure that. Um, in fact, I'll make sure we go out there with you and our city manager and hopefully our sheriff so we can identify, look at that.
I would really appreciate that very much.
We take this very seriously. So thank you for reporting it. I'm really sorry about what happened.
Okay, I just need everybody's help, please.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have no other raised hands at the moment, but I do have three written comments. And the first comment is from Bruce, Bruce Wild, and the subject is senior center. And he says, when will this community resource be reopened? The next message is from Janine, oh, I'm sorry, Jay, Janie Hace. Hi there, this is Janie Hace, and I requested a deduction of two hundred fifty dollars. For our third annual Date Avenue Block Party. We only closed Date Avenue between second and third noon to five, September twenty-fifth with a band from one to three. We didn't get an answer at our, at the two-hour meeting last evening. Where do we go from here? Thank you. Sorry, that was an old message. The next message is from Janine Fitzgerald. And she says, I am three years new to Imperial Beach. What I have noted in the area. Is there are numerous rentals, including many multi-unit properties and absentee, absentee owners are collecting high rents. For, and in many cases have owned the properties numerous years, having equity in the properties. However, many of these properties are rundown, making the neighborhoods look like slums. My suggestion is to find the slum lords for not taking care of their properties. With the high rent they collect, I'm sure they can budget in a weekly gardener and a coat of paint every three years or so. With property values where they are, there is absolutely no reason for Imperial Beach to look like a ragtag rundown community. That it currently looks like. This is a beach community. Our community should look like a quaint beach community. Where people would like to vacation or spend time here enjoying the sights, bringing in revenue to local businesses. Business owners and where residents are proud to call home. Let's take some pride in our quaint little community. I thank you in advance for your consideration to my suggestion. Best regards, Janine Fitzgerald. And Mayor, that's the final written comment, and there are no raised hands.
Okay, so just to make sure, I'm going to ask, we're going to make a, do a motion to move item twelve to the end of the meeting. Is that right?
Mayor, this is Manager Hall. That is correct. I believe there needs to be some discussion about the potential date, not just a, not just a comment. So we would prefer it be moved to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, okay. So is there a motion to move item number twelve to the end of the meeting?
I'll move. Spriggs moves it.
I'll second. Is there a vote?
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by DeDina, to move consent calendar item number twelve to the end of the agenda. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
I agree.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, great. And do we have a motion to approve consent calendar items one through eleven?
Spriggs, so move.
I agree with that.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, I mean, I'm sorry, a motion by Agiri. With a second by Spriggs. I'm sorry. A motion by Spriggs and a second by Gary to approve consent calendar item numbers one through eleven. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
I agree.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Sorry, DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, everyone. And now we move on to item number one, introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twelve oh three, amending the Grobe Municipal Code, adding section twelve point five eight. Flag and flagpole regulations and setting a date for the second reading of the ordinance. And just to note, a modified ordinance was submitted as last minute agenda information, City Hall. City Manager Hall will give their report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Manager Hall. At the last meeting of the City Council was actually the third week in June. But the last meeting of the City Council staff was directed to put together a flag flying policy. I believe that motion or that suggestion was made by Councilmember Spriggs. And so staff has done, done that and prepared a policy for consideration by the City Council. So one of the things we wanted to do was rather than talk about where flags can be flown, we wanted to make sure that the City Council understood some of the flag law here in the state of California. All municipal flag poles should have the United States flag at the top of the flag pole with the California state flag immediately below that. And any flag on the flag pole that is flown on the flag pole should be smaller than the United States flag. So rather than try to talk about what flags can be flown on each pole. Our ordinance reads a little bit different than that, and that is that only the United States flag and the state flag of California will be flown. On any flag pole owned by the city of Imperial Beach with the following exceptions. So these are the exceptions where you would allow flags. Other than the United States or the state of California to be flown on your flag pole. So the first exception would be the, the slide that you see here would be in Veterans Park on that flag pole. If directed by the City Council, the POW MIA flag could be flown on that flag pole. The flag poles that were put in Pier Plaza to welcome visitors to our community from different states in the nation. We have an array of state flags that are flown and they are. Changed out once in a while. And so the other, another exception would be that we would allow state flags to be flown on the flag poles in Pier Plaza. And I'm maybe asking for a special caveat that the only flag that remain all the time is this particular flag, which is the state flag of Wyoming. I'm just kidding. The next exception would be.
Is that really? I don't, you know, did you get away with that in Wyoming by saying you wanted to fly a California flag?
Not a chance.
Just make sure that we're very, very nice here in California.
There you go. That's right. Um, the next exception would be the array of flags that is just, that is out in the road near Iris. And thirteenth that leads into the NOLF, the Naval Outlying Field. And these flags are naval signal flags. I think most of you know that they usually spell out something like. Surf's up or surf IB, but the Navy puts these flags up and they're pretty cool. And so this would be another exception of flying flags that in the city right of way that are owned by the city. And finally, the, the flagpole at City Hall, the city thought, the city council has, and I'm going to read this because I, I learned a lot when I was putting this together. But the City Council does have the authority to establish regulations associated with the flying of flags on city-owned flag poles. In accordance with the government speech doctrine and the, and the legal precedents provided by the Supreme Court of the United States. And as part of that decision. That Supreme Court said that a government organization may advance its own speech without requiring the viewpoint of neutrality. When the government itself is the speaker, so long as the expression does not show religious preference. So basically what that's saying is that the City Council on behalf of the residents who elected you can choose what flags. Will be flown on the flag pole in the city of Imperial Beach. So we want to make clear that the city of Imperial Beach flag poles are not a forum for free public expression. They, they do require that any flag that is flown on the flag pole must be approved by a majority of the City Council. And the, the City Council will also give us the, the dates for the time, the dates and times that that commemorative, commemorative flag will be flown. So again, other than the United States flag and the flag of the state of California. There are no flags allowed in to be flown on Imperial Beach flag poles with the exceptions that have been noted. And so with that, Mayor, if you have any questions or any clarifications, that's great. And I don't know if we'll have any public comment, but. And that is the proposed flag ordinance, and that was taken from a conglomeration of several flag ordinances. And that is the proposed flag ordinance, and that was taken from a conglomeration of several flag ordinances across the nation. So thank you, Mayor.
Great, thanks. And then before we go to council comment or questions, do we have any public comments, City Clerk Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, I will begin with members of the public participating via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. Okay, there are no raised hands, but I do have a written comment. And it's from Brian Pat Bill Bray. And he says, Mayor Council, first I believe only the country, state and city flag should fly on the City Hall flag pole. And yes, the city has a flag, very few in the city are aware. Second, and more importantly, at the June second meeting, Mayor Dina claimed the city flew the Confederate flag. I want to make it very clear, the city has never. Nor will it ever fly any Confederate flag. The flag in question was actually the Alabama state flag. There are major differences between the two. One being the Confederate flag or battle flag, as it is called, is square and has a blue cross of Saint Andrews with stars. On a background of red. The Alabama state flag has a red Saint Andrews cross on a background of white. Florida has the same design, but added a seal. In Ireland, it's called the flag of Saint Patrick, nor is the flag anywhere close to the true flag of Confederacy. Mr. Mayor, I believe you owe the people of IB, city staff, and in particular, City Manager Hall, an apology. How dare you, Pat, Brian, Pat Bill Bray. And that's the final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Just a point of clarification, since I was accused, I was, that accusation was made that. The flag was not the state of Alabama flag. And the record, let the record show that that was. Something that was stated by the former city manager of Imperial Beach and a former public works director. Thank you. It was an historical flag. Um, and now I'll open up the city council comments. There is city count, I don't see hands up, so.
I'll go first, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate staff putting together ordinance and Councilmember Spriggs suggesting that we create an ordinance, which was very necessary. In fact, I appreciate that. I agree with all the content of the ordinance itself. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's very fair and clear. What I would move would be to strike the last part, which I believe is now amended to be. Section B of twelve point five eight. Where it reads that the city should not fund the purchase of the flag. I did some of my own research in the last couple of days and for a fact, the city of National City pays for their flags. Whichever they decide as a council as a whole to fly out of their general plan, city of Chilavista does the same. And, and, and Washington DC as well. So it's pretty common practice. I think that it sends a strong message that we're not just supporting morally the commemorative flag. In when we decide to fly one, but also that, you know, we support it in that regard. And usually flags are. Anywhere between twenty five dollars or less. So that would be my motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Additional comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to mention, you know, I think that we probably know this, but just to clarify. In the ordinance and Andy, you mentioned this to me the other day that. If, if by chance the federal government says that the flag is to be flown at half. Mass, then if there's any of the, any additional flags that might be touched around, they would be removed. To make sure that, you know, none of the flags hit the ground. I think that's an important part because I do believe it happened. Recently with the pride flag, I think right as that went up, we did have a situation that required us to, to lower the flag, so. Just want, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you, Councilman Fisher. Yes, that is included in the ordinance. Our flag pole here at City Hall is not very high. And so that, that did cause that to happen. And so I do appreciate that. And Mayor, again. Just as a summary, if there's no further comments, we are looking to introduce the ordinance as, as either proposed or as amended by. Councilman Agiri, and we will prepare it for a second reading. Thank you.
Good. Are there additional comments?
Mr. Mayor, a public comment just came in. Sure. Okay, this message is from Delia Michelle Huffman. And she says, dear city of IB, if I'm understanding correctly, ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twelve zero three. Was submitted in order to restrict any flags besides the American California. And the exceptions are a prisoner of war, missing in action. Flag may be flown on the flag pole at Veterans Park as a symbol of the city's. Commemoration and recognition of the sacrifices of those members of the United States Armed Forces who remain prisoners of war. Or are missing in action. Flags representing various states in the United States of America may be flown on the flag poles located in Portwood Pier Plaza. Navy signal flags may be flown in the median near the intersection of thirteenth street and Iris Avenue near the naval outlying landing field. And a commemorative flag may be flown at City Hall upon the affirmative vote of the majority of, of the city council. I just wanted to go on the record to say thank you. Our city government does not need to cater to one specific group orientation. We must remain neutral. Thank you. And that's the final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Additional, so just from council colleagues, additional questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would support the, the proposed amendment that we. Not restrict our ability to, to provide funding for a flag that we're willing to support. To be, to be flown. Hopefully that would not exceed twenty five or fifty dollars and hopefully it would also. Include contributions from the organization sponsoring the. The meaning behind the flag or the message. So with, with those thoughts, I would, I would support. You know, that, that change.
That sounds great. So, um. Unless there's additional comments, we'll, we'll move forward.
Mayor, I'd like to just, I just have to ask the question, obviously, as a new council member, I'm not hundred percent sure about this. Now, if this were to come before council again for approval for, for flags and does it come from different groups or do we generate it from within? And then also with that being said, would it be on the consent calendar or would this something be an agenda item?
Council, I mean, City Clerk Kelly, do you want to answer that in terms of where would this be in the next agenda?
Mr. Mayor, are you referring to the ordinance itself?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the intent of the, the question is, how does this work in practice? Or how has it worked in the past? Does a sponsor come to us or one of the council members or the city staff? And, and then it's put on the consent agenda and will it be consent or will it be? An action item on the main agenda. My view is it doesn't matter. Because if it's controversial, we pull the item from the consent calendar. So it, you know, it's on the public agenda. It's notified to everybody, including all of us. So, Councilmember Fisher, to me, it really, really doesn't make that much difference unless you, you feel that it does. Need to go on the actual action agenda for the city council for, for some reason.
No, not, not at all. I had no feelings one way or another. I just, I just was curious how it goes forward from here. That's all.
Mayor Dina, this is Manager Hall. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my microphone to unmute. So sorry about.
Thank Professor Spriggs for clarifying that question. Thank you. I'm sorry, I've got two screens going on here. I'm trying to look at everything and mesmerized by your screen. So thank you very much, guys. Continue, Mr. Hall.
No, Mayor, this is Manager Hall. No, I think Councilman Spriggs did a very good job. I just couldn't get my microphone off mute while I was trying to answer your question. Councilman Fisher, I answered your question eloquently. It just, I did it while I was on mute.
And am I now pro tem professor or professor pro tem or? Mister instead of pro tem?
I like Professor Pro Tem. That sounds great. So anyway, um, okay, so. Any additional questions or comments, comments? Looks like we're good with that amendment. So I guess. City Clerk Kelly, I'll do the, I'll read the motion, but. As amended, as amended, is that what, is what I say?
Correct, Mayor. Introduction as amended. Thank you.
But can I read the title first, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you go ahead and read the title, please.
Okay, this is City Clerk Kelly, ordinance number twenty twenty one dash one two zero three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Imperial Beach, California. Adding chapter twelve point five eight flag and flagpole regulations to the Imperial Beach Municipal Code. Regulating flags and banners that can be raised on city flag poles.
Great, um. I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twelve oh three. As amended by title only, wait for the reading of the ordinance and set the matter for adoption at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Is there a motion?
I saw move as, as amended.
Great, I'll second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think I had made the motion and it was seconded by Councilmember Spriggs.
Okay. Is that right, City Clerk Kelly?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Mayor, this is City Attorney Lyon. I just want to clarify that the amendment or specify that the amendment is to strike. Section twelve point five eight point oh four oh B.
Thank you.
Okay, there has been a motion by Agiri, second by Spriggs. To introduce ordinance number twenty twenty one twelve oh three by title only, wait for the reading of the ordinance and set the matter. For adoption at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Oh, and I forgot to mention it as amended. As stated by the city attorney, Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
I give aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, now we have a report, one, item number one, biannual investment report presented by Chandler Asset Management. And Finance Director Gidman will introduce the item and then turn over the presentation to Jenny Linkowitz, VP Portfolio Manager, Chandler Asset Management. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you're aware, Chandler Asset Management provides our investment management services for the city of Imperial Beach Investment Portfolio. As part of their service, Chandler provides a biannual investment report and an economic update. Tonight, we have Jenny Leckowitz, Linkowitz from Chandler here to provide our report. Jenny, if you'd go ahead?
All right, thank you, Joanne. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for inviting Chandler to present the city's fiscal year-end investment report. I'm Jenny Linkowitz. I'm a senior portfolio manager at Chandler. And I'm going to start out tonight with a brief economic update. So I'm going to start off on slide number three. And the major theme that we're seeing out there, if we could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. The major theme we're seeing is that the US economy is really recovering at a rapid pace from the pandemic. We've got about half of the US population fully vaccinated at this point. We are, however, seeing quite a bit of volatility in the markets. And that's partly due to concerns about the Delta variant and its impact on global economic growth. Also debate over the timing and magnitude of tapering of monetary stimulus that's being provided by the Federal Reserve. They're currently purchasing securities in the market to the tune of a hundred and twenty billion dollars a month of US treasuries and agency mortgages. So that's providing a lot of liquidity in the market. And then we're also seeing a lot of fiscal stimulus from Congress that we have detailed on the next slide. And so altogether, that has totaled up to five point five trillion dollars. And that has really boosted markets with just massive amounts of, of support and liquidity. The most recent round stimulus is detailed here, the American Rescue Plan. And this had more of a focus on individuals and also state and local governments. And we, in addition to all of this, we could also see an infrastructure bill later this year. So we'll be looking to see. Looking for that. And then the next slide shows the employment picture, which is very important. Important measure of how the economy is doing. So the June employment report was extremely strong. We had about eight hundred fifty thousand jobs added to the US economy. In the month of June, and we're going to get another update on Friday for the July information. But we particularly saw recovery in the hard hit leisure and hospitality sector. So that's particularly important to California and beach communities in particular. The US economy is still down, however, about seven million jobs since before the pandemic. So there's still some work to do. On the right, we have a detail of the unemployment rate. That's the green line on the chart on the right. And that's sitting at five point nine percent as of June. That actually ticked up a little bit, but the reason it did is because. Many workers left their jobs to seek different employment. So it's actually sort of a sign of confidence that they can find another job. And then for San Diego County for June, the rate was seven percent. So, so about one percent higher. And then the state of California had unemployment rate of seven point seven percent. So California is a little bit higher than the national average. And then for the US, the underemployment rate, which is the gray dash line on the right, was sitting at nine point eight percent. So that's been trending downwards. It's going in the right direction. And then I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides. Employment is the first part of the Fed's mandate, and then inflation is the second to have stable prices in the economy. And as you can see right now, inflation has been spiking. We had CPI or Consumer Price Index readings on the left. On the green line at five point four percent as of the month of June. And that happened for a couple of reasons. One of them is because we saw inflation last year at this time drop very close to zero. So we're. Comparing to a very low number. And we've also seen, you've probably seen at the grocery store and at the gas, you know, when you're getting gas for your car or whatever, you're probably seeing higher prices. And that as well. So we're, you know, some of the shortages have caused, you've probably seen in the headlines and on the news. That there's been lumber shortages, there's a rubber shortage going on. So all kinds of things are, are impacting that. But the Fed really does expect that to be transitory and they expect it to settle down. As a year goes on and some of these bottlenecks work their way through the economy. So. On the right, we have another measure of inflation that the Fed actually prefers to use. And they like to look at personal consumption, consumption expenditures. And they like to look at the core, which is the gray dash line. And that excludes the volatile food and energy sectors. So that was sitting at three and a half percent as of the most recent reading for that. And so, so that's above their two percent target. But they, as I mentioned, they do expect this to moderate as time goes by. So we're, we're expecting this to be a temporary phenomenon. Looking at the next slide. I'm going to just touch on the consumer real briefly because it's such a major part of our economy. We've seen retail sales very strong. They were up eighteen percent year over year for the month of June. We particularly saw things like clothing stores and restaurants and bars really coming back. So that's encouraging. And this, and kind of a general shift from goods over to services again. So people are going back out. And having those services done. So on the consumer confidence, that is also very high. We saw that spike up to one twenty seven. For the, as of mid-June. So that's been really strong despite some of the headwinds that are still out there. Now I'm going to skip ahead a little bit and go all the way to slide number twelve. That's four slides. In the future and look at the GDP number. And so we had an actually an update to this slide, the second quarter GDP was six and a half percent. So it's well below expectations, but it's actually brought the US back to. Where, where pre pandemic levels were. So we've actually seen, you know, the recoveries happened and hopefully a lot of stimulus that's in the, in the system will boost us even above where we were before the pandemic. So overall for twenty twenty, the economy contracted by three and a half percent in twenty and all of twenty twenty. And then for twenty twenty one, we're expecting growth of six and a half percent. So we're expecting. Things to recover fairly quickly. And, you know, as, it's been determined that this was the shortest recession in US history. It only lasted two months. So we've been recovering ever since. The depths of the lockdowns and, and all that last March and April. And so now we'll take a look at bond yields and the impact that that has. On the next slide. And, you know, yields have been moving, they've been pretty volatile. You can see that they dropped really precipitously last March when the Fed cut rates and. We were in the depths of the pandemic. And since then, we've seen. You know, longer term rates actually started to trend upwards as growth expectations were, were modified. But we've seen short term rates, which are depicted by the dash. The dotted line on the left, it's a purple line. So that shows the two-year treasury. And so that's been pretty much anchored by Fed policy, which has been keeping interest rates very low. We did see that move up a little bit in June when we had the Fed meeting and they did some things to alleviate some of the negative rates that you were seeing in the short term. Part of the yield curve. And then we've seen the five year kind of, you know, it moved up a little bit earlier in the year and now it started to moderate in the tenure as well. So today we're looking at a two-year yield of about point one eight percent. The three-year yield is about point three four percent and the five year is about point six eight percent. So still overall low yields, but they're, they're better than they were. A year ago, and that's depicted on the chart on the right. And you can see the year ago yields are the, the dotted purple line on the bottom. And if you can see, they were quite a bit lower. Going out after, you know, longer than six months. And then the green line is the current picture. So. Going beyond five years, those longer term yields have come down a little bit. But the good news is that the yield curve is upward sloping. So that means that the. Economy, the bond market is expecting that we're going to see economic growth in the future. And we actually get. And we actually get paid more for investing longer term, which is always a good thing, to get rewarded for taking a little bit more interest rate risk. So with that, I'm going to move on to the account and look at the portfolio and how we've been managing that. So if we could skip ahead a couple of slides and look at the objectives. When we're, when we're managing the portfolio, we're always looking at safety, liquidity and yield in order of priority. So obviously during the pandemic, when there was a lot of uncertainty, safety and liquidity were paramount. We were measured against the Bank of America One to Three-Year US Treasury Index for Performance. And we invest the portfolio to be in line with California code and also the investment policy of the city. So we have a compliance report on the next slides that shows that the city was in compliance as of the end of June. And so we're constantly monitoring the portfolio to ensure that it's in compliance. We have systems and staff that are dedicated to that. And then if we could move to the next slide, please. And look at the portfolio characteristics. Okay, taking a look at this, this shows what the portfolio looked like at the end of June. That's the center column. On the right, we've got the previous quarter comparison. And on the left, we've got the benchmark that we're measured against. So looking at modified duration, that's a measure of the interest rate risk in the portfolio. So that was sitting at about 1.8. So it was neutral with the benchmark. We don't want to be too far, too short or too long. I think in this type of environment, we want to just stay, stay close with the benchmark. And the weighted average purchase yield has been trending downwards. It moved from about 1.64 to 1.41. But that's still overall, that's, that's an attractive yield compared to short-term alternatives. And it benefits from securities that we purchased two or three years ago when yields were quite a bit higher. And so the market yield reflects what the yield would be if we were to buy this portfolio or sell this portfolio today. So that's sitting at 30 basis points, so 0.3% versus a quarter of a percent last quarter. So yields have moved up on an aggregate basis for this portfolio over the quarter. And so when yields go up, prices go, prices go down. So that has a counter effect. But this also reflects the difference between the purchase yield and the market yield, reflects the fact that there's unrealized gains in the portfolio of about $174,000 as of the end of June. So that's baked into that calculation. And then the average quality is very high. AAA is the highest level. So the portfolio is one notch below that at high double A. And then the market value held pretty steady despite the rates going up over the course of the quarter. There was some interest income that kind of offset that. Okay, then taking a look at the next slide, we've got the sector comparison. And so you can see that about three-quarters of the portfolio is invested in US government securities. So on the left, we've got the June 30 data and 32% treasuries, about 44% agencies. We've got about 18% of the portfolio invested in high-quality corporate bonds. That's lower than usual. We typically have, we have a limit of 30% that's mandated by state law. However, you know, with the pandemic, it's corporate bonds have been, you know, right when the pandemic hit, we were, we were being very cautious about purchasing corporates. And since then, they've been in such high demand that they've gotten very expensive. So we're still investing in them, but we're just being very selective. So we have a lower allocation than usual. And as time goes on and some of the government intervention in the markets wears off, maybe some of the liquidity wears off, we're hoping to see some opportunities at that time as well. We've got about 5% invested in asset-backed securities and about 1% in super nationals. That's like World Bank, for example. And then taking a look at the next slide. We've got the duration allocation by sector. And so this gives you an idea of what, you know, what the portfolio looks like in terms of how the sectors are invested over time. So we've got the purple is US treasuries, the dark gray is agencies, and the orange is corporate bonds. And then the green is, is asset-backed securities. So this kind of gives you a color depiction of how the portfolio is distributed. And then taking a look at the next slide. We've got the difference in the sectors on a quarter-over-quarter basis on the top. So the green bars are the June 30 data and the gray is the March 31. So there was a decrease in the amount of agencies and an increase in the amount of treasuries in the portfolio and asset-backed securities. Otherwise, things were pretty stable. I would say the, the decrease in agencies was attributable to, last year, the agencies like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac were issuing massive amounts of debt to rebalance their, to refinance their whole portfolio. So we were able to take advantage of that last year, but now we're using that as a source of liquidity because they haven't issued new issue, you know, large, on a large scale this year at all. So, so we're taking advantage of those rich valuations and those securities and actually selling them rather than buying them. So that's gone down and treasuries have gone up. And then as far as the duration as a percent of the benchmark on the bottom, you could see that, you know, going into the pandemic, we were a little bit long the benchmark, but then, you know, as the pandemic hit and the shutdowns hit, we wanted to ensure that the city had adequate liquidity. So we made some funds available and the duration got a little bit shorter. And the city did take some funds out to make sure that there was enough of a liquidity buffer in case it was needed during the, during the season when there's not as many revenues coming in. And then since then, we've returned the portfolio to a neutral stance. So it's been there for, for nearly a year. So taking a look at the next slide. We've got the duration distribution versus the benchmark. So the portfolio is the green bars and the gray is the benchmark. And you can see that about, the main difference is that the benchmark is strictly a one to three. So nothing, they don't have many securities less than a year or longer than three years. Whereas we have the portfolio, about 20% of it is invested a year or less. So that provides a liquidity stream in case that's needed by the city. And it also prevents funds for reinvestment without being forced to sell something if it's not opportunistic to do so. And then we balance that out by having some slightly longer securities. We've got about 6% of the portfolio that's three years or longer. So then taking a look at the next slide. Shows a list of issuers. And of course, the government issuers are the highest percentages. And so corporate issuers and asset-backed issuers, we're very selective about the types of credits that we're investing in. And you can see there's not too much invested in any single credit. We want to keep it well diversified. So some of the bigger ones are, you know, we try to keep the pandemic in mind when we're, you know, making these purchases. So things like, you know, companies like Walmart and, you know, Apple have benefited from, from what's been going on in the economy. And I want to point out, we did make a couple of purchases that I think are noteworthy because we're always looking for opportunities to buy green bonds for portfolios like the City of Imperial Beach. So there was a Toyota asset-backed deal that we were able to purchase that was green. And it was backed entirely by loans on electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles. So we sought that out for the city. And also earlier this year, there was a JP Morgan Social Bond that was issued that we were able to pick up. And those proceeds are going to be geared towards affordable housing, small and medium-sized business, and also healthcare projects. And they're going to steer away from any fossil fuel involvement. So we're looking for opportunities like that when we can find them. They're not a major part of the bond market at this time, but we're keeping an eye out for those. Okay, then looking at the next slide. This is the quality distribution. Everything in the portfolio is rated single or higher by one of the rating agencies. So this is, this slide shows S&amp;P ratings. So some of the securities are rated A or higher by either Moody's or Fitch. And so moving on to the next slide. We've got investment performance. And when we're looking at this, it takes into consideration all your portfolio income over time and also realized and unrealized gains and losses. So the, when we're looking at the performance bars over time, the dark green bar is the portfolio. And then our benchmark comparison is the gray bar. So those are the two that you want to focus on. We've got the, the other benchmark there just as a, as a comparison. But we've been managing the portfolio for the past eight years. So when we're looking at performance data, anything that's longer than a year is going to be annualized. So since inception per annum, the return has been 1.56%. So it's exceeded the, the benchmark by about 0.2%. And then over the last couple of years, we've had about 2.27%. And then you can see rates came down pretty substantially, but on a non-annualized basis. You know, we were able to, over the last 12 months, we were able to have a 0.32% return versus the benchmark of only 0.07%. And over the last three months, we actually had a negative return on the benchmark. But the portfolio was able to eke out a small positive return. So the remainder of the presentation is going to just consist of the holdings and the transactions over the quarter. So with that, I'd like to take any questions that you might have tonight.
Thank you so much for that, that update. It's obviously been a tough, tough time. I know we'll bounce back. Are there any questions and comments from the public first, Senator Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, I will begin with members of the public. Please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak. Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands and there are no written comments.
Great. With that, we can go on to, we'll reverse order now and go to Mayor Protem Spriggs. I know is waiting to jump into this.
Oh, you know, you know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jenny, how do you pronounce your last name?
I pronounce it Linkowitz.
Linkowitz, okay. I didn't want to butcher it too bad. Sorry. My apologies. Well, Ms. Linkowitz, thank you for that really succinct presentation, great slides. Very, very smooth, very direct and, and brief. So I really appreciate that. And I'm, I think it's one of the best we've had so far.
Oh, thank you.
I just had a, a few questions if my colleagues would indulge me. The first one has to do with how the market and we are factoring in Delta variant and further challenges to the reopening that, that COVID is presenting as we continue to have roughly half and not much more than half of the total population immunized. And still big issues involving kids going to school and the likelihood of this thing dragging on longer seems to be undervalued in, by a lot of us, including your projections. Which, to me, kind of ruled out that there'd be any significant impact over the next year or two on economic growth or the, as you pointed out, very important travel and tourism industry, et cetera. Would it be prudent to have another scenario where we discount some of these fairly rosy projections a little bit? If there's a worst-case scenario with the Delta variant or others that are likely to unfold as long as this thing continues to circulate? That's the first question.
Okay, yeah, so that's a great, that's a great observation. And I think the bond market is always looking ahead. And they, I think are, you know, they're factoring in yields on a nominal basis are still extremely low. And we, we saw when we looked at that bond yield chart, we saw that longer-term yields had actually come down from June. So the rosiest projections by the market actually happened in February of this year when GDP expectations for the second quarter were raised up as high as 10%. And that's since moderated and actually they didn't come true. And so bond yields actually did sort of reflect that. And they started to, you know, come down, you know, they came up in June, but then they started coming down again. So we're seeing a flight, what we call a flight to quality, which we get every time that there's uncertainty in the market about what's going to happen with economic growth and also what's going to happen with inflation. So the market, I think, is, you know, when you look at the bond market anyway, I think it's, it's, it's taking that into consideration that there could be less growth in the future. And, you know, when we look at, you know, the 10-year Treasury, that might be an indication of what, you know, what we're thinking about for the future as far as, you know, what, you know, how growth is going to be, how inflation is going to be. And that's, you know, that's been pretty low, actually. So and recently, it's gone even lower. So I think it was about 1.18% when I last looked at it. So, you know, for a 10-year investment, that's, that's not a lot. But we, you know, on the other hand, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of an unprecedented time because we're seeing the stock market near record highs. And I think a lot of that is the result of just the sheer amount of support that's flooded into the market from the government. So you've got, you know, massive amounts of monetary policy and fiscal stimulus and, you know, all this kind of impacting. You know, the Fed is keeping yields so low so corporations can borrow at really low rates. So they're able to, you know, to profit off of that. So I think, you know, you've got kind of an interesting confluence of things, but I think the bond market is very much kind of in line with what you're suggesting. And if it does get worse, I think we'll see yields reflect that as well and we'll see them come down. And, you know, as, as far as the stock market, that's a totally different animal because they're just looking at earnings and, you know, demand for the stock, you know, based on how much liquidity is laying around. So, so that could be different. But as far as, you know, we're focusing more on bonds just with the city's portfolio. And I think that the idea that bond, that yields could be low for a while, even though, you know, there's this threat of inflation out there. I think that's a very, that's, that's very real.
Yes.
Your question.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. And one of the things that you touched on that I just wanted to insert a comment on back to you is the, the stock market relationship to all of this. Because the stock market has been buoyed by a lot of stimulus, a lot of Fed support. And most people that I talk to and listen to in the, you know, investment community on TV or otherwise, don't think this is sustainable. And there are technical indicators that we may be at a top stock market. So if there is a significant correction in the stock market, what effect could that have on bond market and, and our financial condition vis a vis the portfolio that you just summarized?
Yeah, so typically, there's an inverse, and not all the time, we've been seeing, because of some different things going on recently. But typically, when you do see a correction in the stock market, you see a flight, people sell their stocks and they go into bonds. So when, when people are buying bonds, that means the prices go up and the yields go down. So that's part of what's been going on as well over the past month or two is what we've seen is, is some of the equity managers that, you know, people that run pension funds and they've been taking some of the gains out of the stock market and locking those in and then taking that money and buying fixed income securities. So that's been part of, that's been part of the equation of what was that we've actually been seeing in the market. And that's what we would normally expect to see is that when you see stocks correct, you see bond yields come down. And so that means that the securities in the portfolio that we, that we bought for the city become more valuable. But when we're investing in new opportunities, the yields are lower than they would have been.
Would we be able to capitalize on that increased value of the, of our, of our bond securities?
Yeah, so we do, that's a good question. So we do make sales of securities and actually realize gains when it's advantageous to do so. So over the course of the quarter, we did book about 28,000 in realized gains over the quarter and then use those proceeds to purchase other securities.
Okay, last, the last question, and thank you for your responses, is is this sort of spread between inflation and what our portfolio is yielding? Which is, you know, we've had this discussion in past years. And it's more pronounced now than ever because of the way inflation is looking right now. And there's a lot of speculation as to whether it's sort of built in because of the shortage of workforce supply. And it's just going to continue as well as other things, material supplies and all that are in short supplies. So those prices are going to be up for a while versus something that's going to be passing with adjustments and corrections over the next couple of quarters or so. Who knows? But the, the point is that that spread between inflation versus what we're actually yielding in our portfolio is somewhere around 3% to 4% right now, which means a decline. Essentially, we're losing real value in our, in our portfolio versus inflation as long as that gap exists at that amount every year, 3% to 4% is roughly from the figures that you, you gave. Is there, if this is a longer-term problem of inflation, how do you see us reducing that inflation loss to the value of our portfolio?
Yeah, so I did look it up. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
One more, one more thing. So I do want to be the last question. Especially given the decision to not allocate up to the maximum in corporate bonds, which would be 30%, and to be at a lower level when those can provide higher yields, sure, more risk, but higher yields than, than the, than the government bonds.
Yeah, so I actually did, you know, before the presentation, I did check to see what inflation has been over the life of this investment program versus what the, what the program yield has been, which is about 1.56% total return. And that's about the same as what inflation has been. So it's been comparable. You know, obviously, you'd like to have more than inflation. And obviously, if these high inflation rates that we're seeing now were to persist, like as you were saying, if wage growth remains sticky and we end up having, you know, some of the long-term trends persist, then we should start to see rates on bond yields go up as well over time. It's, you know, right now, there's so many technical factors in that number. It's, you know, right now, there's so many technical factors in that number of that 5.4% when you're looking at last year that was so low that I think to get a real read on what inflation is, we're going to need to wait until later this year. And as far as the allocation to corporate bonds, we're always looking every day for good opportunities for the portfolio. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is pay too much for something when, you know, if we think in the future, we're going to be able to buy it at a better price. So we're not seeing as much, because there's so much liquidity and so much demand for fixed income securities, not only from public agencies who are like yourselves, but also we're seeing that coming from foreign investors that are buying, you know, in the US because there's negative yields right now in Germany and some, on some Japanese bonds. So you're seeing this flood of money from central banks, from pension funds, from foreigners, from, you know, all these different avenues that are chasing all this, all this corporate debt. So the result of that has been that we're not getting paid as much over a US treasury, we're not getting rewarded as much to buy a corporate bond today as we did a year, you know, more than a year ago. So that's something we're also factoring into our calculus that if we can buy a treasury at, you know, you know, let's say, you know, half a percent and the corporate bond is also half a percent, we'd rather have the treasury because it has more liquidity and it has less risk. So we're always making that comparison and making sure that we're getting, you know, a good deal basically for the city.
Good. Are we, any additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher?
No additional questions.
Councilor Libra Gonzalez, any questions, France?
No questions on my behalf. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Linkowitz, for the presentation. I, I agree, it was very succinct and clear. I actually have the same question regarding corporate, corporate investments and consumer confidence and Delta variant. So thank you for responding to that question. Just a comment, I would encourage us to continue to seek these green investment opportunities, especially as California transitions to, you know, policies that are a lot stronger in that realm. And especially as we're looking at passing the infrastructure bill at the federal level. And there's a lot of discussion around investments in green infrastructure. So thank you for continuing to search for those opportunities and I just highly encourage them as well. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation and all the good work in managing our resources. And there's no action required on part of the city council. So we'll move on to item number two, and that's fiscal year 2020, 2021, Financial Updating Consideration of Resolution 2021-51, Ratifying Previous Actions in City Council Relation to the FY 2020/21 Budget, Consideration of Additional Amendment to the FY 2020/21 Budget. Finance Director Getman will give the report.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, tonight's report is going to be a financial review of the fiscal year 2021 year as well as the recommendation for some year-end budget amendment, amendments. Now, something I want to keep in mind for everybody or have everybody keep in mind is that these numbers that we're going to be reviewing tonight are unaudited numbers. We have just recently closed our fiscal year and there are still year-end additions and adjustments being made. And until we have our audit in September, our, our numbers will not be finalized. So I'm going to begin the presentation kind of with our general fund, the revenue and then the expenditures and then move into our internal service funds and sewer funds and then kind of do a wrap up at the end just to give you a direction that we're heading. So to begin with the general fund revenues, as you can see on this chart, our general, our original budget for fiscal year 1920 was $21.4 million and we made some amendments or council made some amendments over the fiscal year. And look, I just realized too, I have some wrong dates. Those should say fiscal year 2021 at the top, by the way. So, and then ultimately, we are projecting to finish the year with $23.2 million. Now, something to keep in mind as we look at these budgeted numbers is this budget was adopted two years ago during the biennial budget process of 1920, 2021. So you were trying to read into a crystal ball at that time at what could happen. That's part of the reason for this review and the year-end adjustments that we do each year. But ultimately, you can see that our projections are going to be coming in ahead of budget. So looking at it a little different way, and these are the categories that we usually set our revenues in. And as you can see, if you look at each one of these, I'm comparing the original to the current, to the projected, going from left to right in each category. Everything is pretty much coming in right on target with the budget, with the exception of our taxes. Our taxes are going to be coming in higher and I'll explain more in detail as we go through this, what is occurring with that. So some people like graphs, some people like numbers. So we're going to present things both ways here. So numerically, this is what we can see on our revenues coming in. Now, something, as I stated, you know, you can see most things are coming in pretty close to their targets on their budget with the exception of the taxes being higher. What I'd like to point out though is, don't pay a whole lot of attention or a whole lot of, put a whole lot of worth into the percentages on each line item. Because as you can see, for example, on our miscellaneous revenue, it looks like we're doing phenomenally when we're 145% ahead of our budget. However, when you look at that as a percentage, that category as a percentage, it's only about 1% of our budget. So again, our taxes are coming in about 1.3 ahead of our budget. We have some other areas that are falling in slightly below and then a couple, you know, a couple more areas ahead. So I'm going to explain those variances to you here. So as I said, we're about 1.25 over for our revenues. Now, the largest portion of that is coming in in our property taxes at about $1.1 million. So that's about one person, that's our 1% general purpose in addition to our RPTTF pass-throughs, RPTTF residuals, and one item that's not in there is the, the VLF that was passed through from the state as a portion of our property tax. As you recall, I think we've reviewed this in the past, that 1% general purpose is kind of our base property tax that was established back when our, the redevelopment agency was established years ago. And that remains pretty stable year to year. Where we usually see our growth is in our RPTTF pass-through and residual as, and that's a result of the property values actually increasing. Those passes will increase. And then in addition to that, as the successor agency pays off debt or in, as we've done recently, actually refunds debt and is able to pay less interest on our, our debt for that, for those, those issues. It allows more funds to be able to be passed through. So that's what's causing that, that large increase in over budget. Just as an FYI, we have seen, since we've seen these increases, those have been built into these next year's budget cycles. So we will not anticipate seeing this large of a deviation between our budget and our actuals. Additionally, we've had about $352,000 over budget in our sales tax. 110,000 of that is just from our straight 1% sales tax. And we also received our first payments on our measure I for the quarter, which were not budgeted in this last year. We also seen about 131,000 over budget in our money and property. That just has to do with primarily our leases on our properties for our sale sites and such. We do receive a CIP increase in those every year. That is a portion of it and some of it was just, again, like I said, budget was established two years ago. So there, those numbers were guesses. Miscellaneous revenue about $234,000 over budget. The largest portion of that is due to reimbursements from CAL OES for our firefighters' strike team participation in the wildfires over this last year. We did see decreases in our transient occupancy tax coming in about 143 below budget, primarily pandemic related from what we can tell as we all are aware, our hotels were not booked as they normally would be and as well as our vacation rentals, not booked as they would normally be during a normal year. Then our charges for services and our fine for forfeit, and fines and forfeitures were also under budget. We did have, we see a decrease in our building permits and other related permits. Whether those were pandemic related or cyclical is something that is very difficult to tell. But we did also see a decrease in the revenues from fines and forfeitures because our areas like parking sites were not being enforced for a period of time. On the expenditure side, again, those, those numbers should say 2021, my apologies for that error. We started with an original budget of about 21.7 million. Council did make some amendments to put us to a current budget of 22.8. And we are projected to come in at about 21.5. So again, coming in below our budget target, which is a good thing on the expenditure side. Breaking it down by kind of the categories or departments, if you'd like to put it that way, for the same way we present in our financials, we have our general government, public safety, parks, recs and tidelands, public works and capital outlay. And again, looking at them side by side, you can see in most cases, our projections are going to be coming in below our budget. And with the exception of the general government. And again, I'll go into more detail about that on a following slide. And then once again, numerically, we can see, for those who prefer to look at it that way, what our percentages were. One department coming in over budget, the remainders are coming in under budget. So the reasoning behind these is, as we see the actual expenditures are projecting to come in below budget by about $1.3 million. Our general government, which is primarily the area of the, the city council, city manager, city clerk, finance, most of those departments that are in-house, shall we say, is coming in about $342,000 over budget. Now, the sole reason for that is the fact that we had all the COVID-19 expenditures and mitigation expenditures that we incurred this last year with the receipt of the CARES funds. Those, those expenditures were unbudgeted and as a result, and we accounted for everything within the city manager's contingency account. So that put that one department primarily completely over budget. But like I said, those expenditures will be offset by CARES Act funds too. Public safety came in about $381,000 under budget. Although we did see some additional fire personnel costs due to overtime and additional shifts having to be taken because of the strike teams, we were able to reduce some of our general fund expenditures on our public safety, the sheriff's contract by using some CalCOPs or what they call supplemental law enforcement savings funds. We had some additional, we had some residual funds in a special, in our special fund for that purpose. And I was able to use those on a one-time basis only to reduce that, the general fund cost on that for this year. For the parks, recs and tidelands were about $333,000 under budget. That's related to minimally, or minimally active or inactive programs and reduced staffing during the pandemic. And then public works is coming in about $476,000 under budget. That's related pretty much to grant spending that hasn't, on projects that have not been completed related to the TJ River Coastal Conservancy and the Bay Shore Bike Week Grants. So to move to our sewer enterprise, basically, we're coming in 5.5 million on revenue, 5.5 or 5.3 million dollars on expenditures, pretty much almost right on where we want it to be budget-wise also. And then basically, as I said, revenue slightly over expenditures, not much happening in that, in that fund. And the idea with that surplus of about $200,000 is that we'll go towards our capital outlay or go into this fund balance, excuse me, for future capital outlay, for emergency reserves and for cash flow purposes. If you recall, we actually just recently completed a sewer study and that fund balance was extremely low and does need to be built up. And this is only just a small chip in the, in the block there for that. Moving to our internal service funds, we have four internal service funds. We have vehicle maintenance, risk management, which is our insurance premiums and such for the city, information technology and facilities maintenance. These are all funds that actually serve the departments of the city. They are funded by two sources, the general fund and the sewer fund. And we budget, it's been budgeted primarily the, make sure I want to word this the right way. The, we have not, there has not been ample revenue projected programmed to cover the expenditures in the last several years. So as you can see here, our expenditures have outpaced the revenues. So, and that is something we are looking into and I will again, I'll cover that a little bit more. So as I stated, the expenditures have been exceeding the programmed revenues. That has been an issue over the last several budget cycles and we need to work on building up the net position or the fund balance in those four funds, internal service funds in order to have the funding available for future capital outlay and for emergency purposes. So one of the things staff will be doing is working on fund balance policies to, for those in the future. And just as kind of on a visual, this is what is going on with those fund balances. As you can see, they have been slowly going downhill for the last several years. What we do want to point out, there's two things actually. First of all, the orange line, which is our risk management, will always be extremely volatile as we complete our actuarials each year. Those funds and balances are adjusted for claims that may be on the books or may have been taken off the books or adjustments. So that one just, it ends up going up and down a lot. However, the other part we want to let you know is that while those have been slowly going down over this last budget cycle, we have adequately funded those funds to make sure that they do not decrease in the future. And as I said, our goal is to work to start seeing those fund balances increase so that everything is being properly funded. So kind of to summarize everything that, that was going on here, first of all, the reminder, everything that, that these numbers that have been presented will change as this fiscal year is closed and audited. Currently, general fund expenditures are projected to exceed, our revenues are projected to exceed our expenditures by about $1.7 million. Sounds like a great big number, however, where there's about $600,000 to $700,000 in capital and grant funding that is going to be need, need to be carried into the next fiscal year or into fiscal year 21, 22. So that 1.7 will drop as far as what is going to be available as, as fund balance. Most of that 1.7 is made up of unanticipated revenues, additional property taxes, things from the CARES fact, CARES Act funding and such. And then on the expenditure side, thanks to council and the financial preparation and recovery plan, that kind of started the city on a, on a road to success for being able to navigate this last year. And then with the staff being extremely careful on their spending, trying to delay projects if necessary and deferring maintenance if possible, that has also allowed the city to get into the surplus mode. That being said, there is a good chance that at some point we will have to use some of that surplus for one-time projects that have been delayed. On the sewer fund, we are slightly, revenue is slightly over expenditures, as I stated earlier. No big news there. And then the internal service funds, our expenditures have been exceeding the programmed revenue and the goal of staff will be to develop policies for an appropriate fund balance. So what we will be doing in the fall as we complete our audit is coming back to the council, not only with our final audit reports, but also with proposed uses of that surplus. As I said, there are some capital projects that are currently underway and those funds are pretty much non-discretionary. The funds have been brought in for specific reasons and those projects must be completed. And so those budgets will probably be rolled into this fiscal year 21, 22. The other priority is to stabilize and increase any general fund balances, including our, our general fund reserve, our emergency reserve, we have public works reserves and, and items as such. And then of course, to increase the fund balances of those internal service funds to make those more stable. So then to wrap this up, the other thing that is done every fiscal year at the, at year end is that we do our budget amendments in order to bring everything in line as part of our, our policy. If we have deviations in accounts of 5% or greater, ideally, those budget adjustments should be made. So kind of in a summary, what we're looking, what staff is asking is that we increase our fiscal year 2021 revenue budget by $1.9 million. And the largest areas of those increases are for property tax and sales tax. We will be looking at a decrease in our transient occupancy tax and our building permits and increase in our grant revenue for the CARES Act funding and then also increases in our reimbursements. The detail for that revenue budget has been, or red revenue amendments have been attached to the resolution so that you can see the multiple line items. As I said, it affects multiple lines, but this is the primary reason for the adjustments. And then on the expenditure side, we're looking into an increase in our expenditure budget of about one point, or about 1 million. And this is primarily related to a couple of professional services contracts that were authorized by council, our CARES Act spending and then overtime and straight time related to the strike team participation on the wildfires. On the internal service funds, we are looking at increasing the revenue and expenditures for the vehicle maintenance, both related to expenses from the wildfire, our fire engine had to undergo some, some service and maintenance. And thankfully, we were reimbursed by CAL OES for vehicle usage. So we were able to put that into our So we were able to put that into our internal service fund to help cover those, those expenditures. On the risk management side, we need to increase the revenues and expenditures by about $110,000 for funds that were received from the sewer fund and then had to be paid out as a result of a sewer claim. And that ties to that last increase, an increase in the expenditure in the sewer fund where we're transferring those funds from the sewer fund to the internal, internal service fund. So that's just basically a movement of money out of the sewer fund into the risk management fund and then paid out of the risk management fund. So tonight's recommendation is that council adopt Resolution 202151, ratifying and consolidating previous actions of the city council impacting the city of Imperial Beach and approving additional amendments to the fiscal year 2021 budget. I won't take any questions if you have any.
Great, we'll go to public comment. Thank you so much, Finance Director Getman, I appreciate it. Great work and, you know, challenging, but we're on the road to recovery, so that's good. It's great, beyond that, it's great. So anyway, um, is there other public comments?
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will begin with people participating via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak. Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands and no written comments.
Great, we'll start with Councilmember Libra Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, Mayor, someone raised their hand. It's Marty Emerald. Please unmute yourself and begin.
Unmute, am I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I see it, okay. Curious, what is the, the payment delay on, on getting money reimbursed for the strike teams? Do you get it promptly or do you have to wait some quarters or what?
Normally, with the state, we do get those payments relatively rapidly. I think it took, it takes about six months, I think, is what it took on our first reimbursement. I think our most recent reimbursement, I think, only took about three months. So it does, it just depends on the state's speed on that. They try to get them out as rapidly as possible.
Yeah, I, I know it, it does tend to have some repercussions on operating budgets for the city and the, and our public safety. So I was, I was curious about that. And then, as part of your pulling together these budgets, are you, are you calculating deferred maintenance on city-owned properties, parks, our city hall, other facilities?
No, we don't. That, I, the closest we could get on something like that is as I was talking about with our internal service funds being, looking to be able to fund those appropriately, so we have monies put aside for those kind of things.
Okay.
I didn't mean to mute her.
Any additional questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I accidentally muted Ms. Emerald.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, that's fine.
I'm so sorry. Ms. Emerald, please unmute yourself, I, I apologize.
Hi Marty, can you unmute yourself? May have been a technical glitch.
There we go, how about that? Okay, I, I ask because many of the items in one of your next topics regarding the COVID grants have to do with deferred maintenance and there's several million dollars there. I, I think it might be helpful for the city to let us know about our deferred maintenance situation, how much money we need to catch up with all sorts of, you know, from sewers to parks to buildings that we have so that we understand where we, where we're going and the kind of money we have to generate to catch up with the deferred maintenance. So that's why I ask, and it would be nice to get a report on that to the public sometime in the near future, when you have time. Thank you.
That's, that's a great point. I mean, the whole city's deferred maintenance, right? We've, you know, 60 years of not being able to invest in the services and infrastructure that we need for our residents. So, great point. And hopefully, we can begin to ameliorate that. And so, additional questions or comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a raised hand from Patricia Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza, please unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Patricia Mendoza. I've been living in the city of Imperial Beach, which we love, me and my two children. And I, I don't know if I jumped in a little late, but I, I was just really worried about all the money going to parks right now when a lot of people are being, you know, impacted about the COVID.
Ms. Mendoza, this is the next item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I'll mute myself, thank you.
Thank you.
Or you can mute me, thank you.
Great, are there additional questions or comments?
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Great, we can start with, thank you so much, again, that was great. Councilmember Libra Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have no questions for Joanne. I just have a couple of comments. A great job, I appreciate the job you're doing and I am a graph for sure person. Thank you very much.
I will make sure I keep that in mind for you.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Libra Gonzalez. It's a great presentation, very easy for those of us who aren't very smart, really is government, government 101 for dummies. So thank you again. I did have a question, Measure I, you said it comes out to, we received the first payment for $240,000. And I know that it goes into the general fund, or at least that's what I'm remembering. How do we make sure that that money doesn't go into anything else other than helping with, you know, keeping our city safe? That was a huge concern as I knocked on doors through the campaign. People really were in favor, as long as the money went to where it was going to, to be needed to make our city safer. How are we ensuring that it does go to those places? And I know that, as you mentioned, it could go into the internal service funds to help us prepare for types of things. But my understanding, I think the intent of Measure I was to, to create, you know, safety in our public parks and our public spaces and all throughout the city, not, not necessarily preparing for future events.
Councilman Fisher, this is Manager Hall. Yeah, that's a very good comment. I think that the council will remember as the budget was prepared and adopted in June, we did anticipate and project how much money we would be receiving from Measure I. And we wanted to make sure to identify those areas in the most recent adopted budget to indicate that all of the Measure I funding would go towards clean and safe neighborhoods. That was the clear priority of the residents when they voted for that sales tax. And so, I, I believe we made a presentation on how that money would be spent in future budgets on things like our additional firefighter, the, the new recreation program to give kids and other, and adults some meaningful activities in the community, graffiti abatement, some of those kinds of things. So that's a really good point. And, and we probably could on a regular basis come back to the city council and, and demonstrate how we're using those funds appropriately for clean and safe neighborhoods.
Thanks, Eddie. I just want to make sure, because I know, I know we've included it in our future budgets. We, we went through that earlier in the year. I'm just curious of where that money is now and since it ends up in the surplus as, as overall, if it's going to be set aside or earmarked or what's, what's the plan? Because again, we're, we're going back to the previous budget about that. Or was it already earmarked in that previous budget? Maybe that's where I'm, I'm misinformed.
So we have tried to move forward to hire the 12th firefighter even before this budget started. And again, I, I think it's really important for our residents to make sure that we have a, a proper accounting for Measure I. So we will also bring back where the, the, even this last quarter of the last fiscal year was used to, to create the clean and safe neighborhoods. I'll be honest, I don't have those numbers on the top of my head. So it'd be better if we came back to you with a detailed report so that people know that we're spending that money properly. I think that's a, a great suggestion.
Thanks, Andy. And I know that 70% of those who voted in last election would, would greatly appreciate that. And I think it just shows transparency and clarity for what we do as a city and what we approve as a council. So thank you for that information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Joanne. Very well done, very clear, verbal charts and graphs. I mean, you can't ask for more than that. Every media covered. I guess my, my concern is, has to do with, and I really appreciate Marty Emerald's comment about deferred maintenance. This is always something that is, can be a real liability that we don't recognize until it becomes a crisis. And this is not just our city, it's, it's every city, it's educational institutions, it's, you name it. It's not a sexy item, doesn't end up being a top priority of, for residents because it's hidden in the basic operations of, of services and facilities that everybody relies on until something breaks. Then all of a sudden, why didn't you deal with that? So I think it's a really good point. The fund balance declines that you referred to as well, especially for the, the service funds, internal service funds, is a little bit disturbing to me as well. Both of these things suggest to me that even though we have a, a slight surplus in the budget, and as you said, a good half of that is going to go to commitments that were carried forward into the next year that were delayed. It isn't as big as we thought it was and it's certainly not enough to cover the restoration of those fund balances that are so essential. For the other, for the new council members and maybe even Councilmember Agiri, we had really strong fund balances about four years ago, pretty much across the board. And that's one of the things that really equipped us to deal with the cash flow problems we had with COVID. And I, I, I think we need to, we need to think about how important it is to restore those, create a fund for deferred maintenance. And that means we've got to grow our revenue. This isn't going to be taken care of in one year, but it means that we have to consistently have, you know, revenue growing over expenses for several years and to be wise and smart about how we invest that additional revenue. And it's not just saving money in the bank, it's applying it to budgetary needs like deferred maintenance, restoration of fund balances, et cetera, in important areas. We can't use general funds to restore the fund balance in the sewer fund, but that's going to, we already took action a few months ago to, to, with the rate increases that will gradually take care of that. And that was painful and because that is a direct expense on our residents. We need to find non-tax ways of generating revenue over expenditures. And that means really thinking about our tourism and ecotourism, how we can increase our TOT, how we can increase other sources of revenue to the city. And that's really kind of a special exercise that I, I think we need to undertake for the long-term well-being of our, of our community. So that's really all I had to say was a, it was more of a comment than a question. Joanne, if you want to comment on my comment, that's, that's fine. But I really commend you for the great work that you're doing. We're miles ahead of where we were before you came on board. And I think everybody really appreciates, appreciates your great value to the city.
Thank you, Councilman Spriggs. Yeah, the only comment I would add to that is that, you know, when we talk about the deferred maintenance, that the fund balances tie right into that. It's, it's building those fund balances so that we can plan for that deferred maintenance for the, you know, basically, you're building up for these one-time expenditures that you need to do on occasion and move those expenditures from, from place to place. So, and that's a goal that we, you know, we've discussed it here, you know, at the department level that we need to look into doing that. So it's a priority for us to start addressing those items.
Yeah, this isn't going to take care of itself. And one of the, I think, our fiduciary responsibilities is to make sure that we have a plan in place over several years that, to restore those balances. And that means, you know, some economic planning, some strategic planning, et cetera, to generate those additional revenues. It's not going to necessarily happen by itself. In fact, if there's an economic downturn, which is periodic in the world, the country and the state, it's just going to be, you know, we'll, we'll have another challenge probably within the next two to four years, which is what the cycle of these, these things seems to, the cycle we seem to have. So again, I, I think we probably need a workshop to, to bring in some city finance or I should say, on a fundamental economic development basis, not just city finance year to year, which we have great capacity there, but really looking at what can cities do to enhance their economic, their economic picture over the medium to long term? And what can the coastal visitor-serving community like ours do more than what we're doing already? This is not exactly expertise we necessarily have, although we've got great people. But we've really got to tackle this, I think, for the long-term services that we, that our residents deserve and that we'll only be able to provide if we have the growing revenues. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Um, Councilmember Agiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Director Getman for great presentation and always your due diligence and creativity and ensuring that all of our assets are well managed. I want to echo what Councilmember Spriggs mentioned. I, I would, I would support the idea of a, of a workshop. I think that, you know, we've been quite resilient in our, you know, financial strategies, not just prior to the pandemic, but during the pandemic. However, I do think that we need to start thinking a little bit more medium to long term, especially being a coastal city. I would encourage us to really think at maximizing our opportunities and what we have to offer, especially for example, when it comes to the TOT. I do have a clarifying question for you, Director Getman. In, in the, in one of the tables that you presented, you had a line item where we were over budget by 342,000 and expenses related to COVID. I don't recall at the top of my head what slide that was. But I just, I guess my question is, is the expectation to have that reimbursed by CARES Act money or by ARBO money?
That, that is actually part of the CARES Act money. In the budget adjustments that we're doing, that I, that I'm proposing with the resolution, there is an increase in our revenues from CARES Act and then there's an increase on the expenditure side also to cover those COVID-related costs.
Okay, so we're, we're.
Those are covered, yes.
Okay, that's good to know. I look forward to the audited financials once those are completed in September. And thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to introduce a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-51, ratifying and consolidating previous actions in the city, of the city council impacting the city of Imperial Beach budget and approving amendments to the FY 2021 budget. Your motion?
Great, so move.
Fisher's second.
Great, thank you.
There, this is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Fisher, to adopt Resolution Number 2021-51. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
I agree.
Councilmember Libra Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Libra Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Quotem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
You know, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Item number, thank you all, item number three, and thanks, Joanna. Item number three, consideration of Resolution Number 2021-48, establishing the Save and Build Beach American Rescue Plan Act mitigation program. Senior Director Hall will give the report.
Thank you, Mayor DeDina. This is Manager Hall and I, I, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here because when the mayor's not sitting next to me, he can't hit my fingers with his mallet. So I can say, but in that last item, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that in the middle of a pandemic, for the city to come out 1.2 million dollars of revenue over expenditures is remarkable. Just really want to compliment the city staff and the city council for jumping on this early, putting in your financial recovery plan and, and all the work that was done. That was an incredibly positive report and I want to make sure that, that people understand that. I also want to make real quick comment about the fund balances associated with the internal service funds. Remember, we, we used to allocate money money from each department to these internal service funds, and our previous finance director moved away from that, and our current finance director is moving back to that. So it's more of an allocation issue than it is an overspending issue, and I just want to make sure that that was clear. So I just, I think it's important to clarify that as we move into this next discussion, because there was a lot of talk about deferred maintenance. And I think that that's maybe a good place to start, even before I start my presentation. There'll be some discussion about the building that the city owns at one seventy Palm, which is, which commonly called the, the Adult Education Center. The reason the city has that building is because the school district had so much deferred maintenance on it that they quit using the building, and by agreement, as soon as the school district quit, quit using that building, it became ownership of the city. And so, yeah, I think it is important to make sure that we are maintaining our facilities, and I think that those are some good comments. But it's important to, to point out that that's why the city has the building in the first place, is because of some of those things. But I did want to talk a little bit about.
Paul, just to clarify, is my understanding, the city actually originally gave that, that building to the school district, and we got it back. Is that correct?
So the city has always owned the property. What happened was that the school district built the building, and they were to use it as a, as an education center. But if the building was ever ceased to be used as an education center, then that building would then become ownership of the city, or at the end of the lease, which I believe was going to go until twenty fifty-two. But they quit using it as an education center, so it reverted back to the city earlier than, than twenty fifty-two.
Okay, just thanks for clarifying that.
Sure. But so, so all of the discussion, and I'm glad that we're having so many important financial discussions tonight, because I do think that there are some opportunities here and, and for a lot of good things to happen in the community. And so we just wanted to talk a little bit about what the American Rescue Plan Act is and maybe what it is not. And you can see on the chart there on the left, kind of how the one point nine trillion dollars was allocated across the nation, and you can see the second from the bottom there, that, that lighter blue square, kind of that medium blue square, was that in, for state and local governments, three hundred and fifty million dollars was provided for the relief, the COVID relief through the rescue plan. And sixty-five billion of that went to municipalities, and through a long series of formulas and whatnot, six point five six four million dollars in COVID relief came to the city of Imperial Beach. And right from the Department of Treasury, they identify what, what some of these priorities should be for the expenditure of these funds. And so they include support public health expenditures, address negative economic impacts, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So that comes straight from the Treasury. Now, those are very broad categories, and the Department of Treasury says, well, cities have a lot of flexibility in how to do this and, and how to identify expenditures in these areas. But over the months, as we have had a lot of meetings and interaction with the Department of the Treasury and the state, you'll say, well, is this eligible? Is this, is this action eligible? No, that's not eligible. Or is this one eligible? So, so even though there's great deference given to cities, there are still a lot of things that these funds cannot be used for. So just want to make sure that, that all of, all of the funds should be tied back to some sort of COVID impact. And, and we've tried very hard to do that, and in doing that, we identified some, some guiding principles as staff. Now, now, we do want to point out that the city council can change any or all of these allocations. This is just a recommendation of staff looking at what's happening in the city, talking about some of the things that were just discussed, deferred maintenance, needs of our, of our residents, needs of our staff, needs for the community. But one of the things we wanted to, so, so we, we kind of identified some priorities as we were putting this proposal together for you to consider, and one is no creation of reoccurring expenditures, because this is one-time money. This is only going to come to the city one time. So we don't want to create something that's going to have ongoing expenses. So, you know, hiring new staff, those kinds of things is very difficult with this money, because the, the staff will be here four years into the future, but this is a one-time benefit that we will be receiving. We also thought it was important to provide long-term community benefits. I think we all hoped that COVID would only last a couple of months. We're moving into now year two, and, and it looks like that this could be going on for many months into the future. So, so we want to make sure that because the, we don't believe that the recovery from COVID is going to be immediate. We think that there's going to be impacts in our community for a long time, whether that is, you know, all the impacts of COVID, I think, are with us to stay for a while. So we want to make sure that the things we're looking at are long-term community benefits. And then we also want to invest in critical infrastructure and facilities, and we want to make sure we do what we can to enhance the financial stability and cover some of our temporary shortfalls that was allowed by the act by recovering some of our lost revenue. So some of the things that we looked at, and again, these are staff proposals, and, and we look for more guidance tonight from the city council, but I want to point out that this is a plan. All of these are round numbers. We do not have engineered numbers. We don't have any kind of architecture or on any of the, the proposed programs. So we want to make sure that you understand this is a plan, some guidance for us to get going, because the funds do need to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four. So there's kind of a short window here. So we, I know that sounds like a long time away, but remember when COVID started, seemed like just yesterday, and it's almost been two years. So we do need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on the clock. But some of the things we've looked at here are some essential personnel costs, and, and what that is, is that some of our, first, some of our personnel, fire department, for example, and some others, they, they really had to, they were exposed very highly to COVID, and there was some, some extra effort that they had to put in, extra time, learn new skills, and some of those kinds of things. And that was one of the high priorities of the Recovery Plan Act was to benefit some of your essential personnel. And so we have put some funding in for that item. The heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, the HVAC units in all of the city buildings, most of them are old. We need to think about, and, and I, and staff would recommend that we replace all of those to have better filtration in our buildings, not just now, but in the future. Flu season comes around every year, but that will allow us, that we believe, to have safer buildings when the public gathers in our buildings. And again, most of our buildings are, are older, and we want to make sure that we have things like HEPA filters and, and other things that make both our staff and the community safer when they visit our buildings. We've talked about some of the deferred maintenance, so you know, I don't have to probably go too much deeper into that, but we all know that there's some deferred maintenance at the sports park, including some renovations that were discussed last year with the skate park facility, but the indoor facility as well, the gym and the karate room, the restrooms. It, that, that building now has been used as a testing center and continues to be heavily used as a testing center in our community. And when we're done, that building truly does need to be updated. It's, it's some of that deferred maintenance that you were talking about. We've, we've discussed a little bit about one seventy Palm. That's a great resource for our facility. However, it's got a lot of deferred maintenance right now. The roof leaks, and so it can't be used for very much. The HVAC isn't working, the elevator needs some work, and there's just been a lot of deferred maintenance in that building. We hope that we can update that building and use it as part of our recreation program for community programs. Now, when, lots of times when people think recreation, they think sports. What we want to do is make sure that we have a very comprehensive recreation program that includes a lot of non-sports activities. We also want to include in there, for instance, an office where people can come to understand more about what kind of county programs are out there. If people want to understand programs where they might be able to get assistance from South Bay Community Services. We want to be able to have a room where nonprofit and, and community groups can have meetings. We also need to have, again, as I mentioned, some of the non-sports recreation, like sewing classes and cooking classes, and perhaps dance classes, or some of those parts of the recreation program that are non-sports related, and we need a home for those. And we believe that if one seventy Palm is properly renovated, it can be a really nice community center and serve a lot of those purposes, at, at the same time as taking care of some of that deferred maintenance. We know that some of our businesses have struggled. If I go back to that first slide, there's a slice for businesses in there. There's also a slice for, for household, for households. And so, but we do believe that even though there is funding in the recovery plan for both businesses and households, we believe that there are some people in our community that are going to fall through the cracks and may not be eligible for those other funding sources. So we want to make sure that we have some money set aside so that if there are businesses or households that don't qualify for other funding relief, that we can provide that as a community to them. One of the things that we found out during COVID is we need to get information out to our residents more quickly. Not everyone is on Facebook, not everyone is texting or, or even cell phones. And so one of the things we found very effective was some of the electronic signs that we have moved around town on occasion. But as you know, those electronic signs are really about traffic management and some of the other things we're trying to accomplish. And so we're looking at the placement of some community informational signs so that we can get word out to our residents as quickly as possible. One more item that is related to outdoor recreation is the repairs that are needed at the soccer field that is located near the Boys and Girls Club. That soccer field is in poor condition right now. If you've had a chance to see that, it does need to be resurfaced. It has served us well. It is a very popular facility. It has served us well. And, but it's time that, 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 that facility be updated. We do want to make sure that it's.
Oh, I think it's important to clarify that. That, that, that soccer field has served elder, a lot of older men or adults, young adults from outside of Imperial Beach who have charged people to use the field that belongs to the city. That field has not had adequate supervision, and in fact, it has been a moneymaker for people who have illegally charged others to, to play there. So I, I, I would hope that any effort to improve anything includes very tight control of that facility so that we prioritize children from Imperial Beach and soccer leagues and other activities from Imperial Beach that are child and adolescent and teen-based, rather than these adult leagues of people who come from all over the county and, and across, from across the border.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that up. You're correct. And, and not only that, I think you brought up that, that it gets used for, for many different things. I believe that even the Boys and Girls Club continue to use that for some of their day camp programs, and we want to make sure that that's a multiple-use field. We want to make sure that the lines are not just soccer, that we also include perhaps T-ball fields or something, so that it absolutely becomes a resource for as many people in the community as possible.
Yeah, and just additionally, that it's become a major source of criminal activity with a lot of drinking and fighting going on late at night. Residents have complained for years about that place and the neighbors. So I'm glad, I, I, I would, again, just, I know we're all aware of that, the need to really, really make sure we have tight oversight of that facility.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that addition. And then some of the things where you see necessary infrastructure and repairs and improvements. We do have some infrastructure needs in our community. There are some alleys, for example, that are still dirt alleys, and people access them as their primary access. And some of those people, especially in our, in our lower-income portions of our community, we want to make sure that they have better access to, to transportation in our community, and that's one of the things we want to look at. Lighting, there are some areas of our community where we have been told that it's very dangerous, and some lighting could really help with some of the community safety and whatnot. So we wanted to make sure that there was some allocation for those kinds of things. And then that recapture of impacted expenses and services, that's basically where, what we, what was referred to as recapturing some lost revenue. There were several things that we were unable to do because we cut back on a lot of our spending last year. But we need some, you know, one of the things I can think of is, we've been talking a little bit about the parks. We actually need some park vehicles. I don't know, I always call them grasshoppers, but they're utility vehicles that can go in the parks, and they, they can get the tools close to where they're doing irrigation work or, or other things in the park. So there's some expenditures that we had to delay because we were being careful with COVID. And the, the ARPA allows you to use this funding to catch up on some of those deferred expenses. So again, this is, this at least was intended to provide a framework of where we might want to go as a community and kind of head. Now, there's going to be any number of opinions, but staff wanted to, you know, we've always felt like it's easier to critique than it is to create sometime. So sometimes it's just getting something in front of the city council, allowing you to have some discussion and, and massage this a little bit. And then in the end, we just want to make sure that this opportunity, that, that the city takes advantage of this opportunity to, to help the community as much as possible, help the residents as much as possible, and really be careful about what we do and how we spend the money that we are receiving from the American Rescue Plan Act. With that, Mayor, if there's no immediate questions of the city council, again, I would remind you, it's, it's a, a plan. It's, these are, there, there are no specific plans that have been drawn for any one of these facilities or any of these things, other than the three hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is some pretty specific expenditures that, that were identified in last year's, the last two-year budget. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you and see if there's any public comment or any initial questions from the city council, and appreciate your time and glad that, by the way, this is a blessing. We're, we're very fortunate to have, have received this funding and, and we hope to do the very most as we possibly can for the community. So thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you. This would be the most significant investment in the history of Imperial Beach and the community and recreational public services. So, you know, absolutely amazing, and we're grateful to the federal government and Congress and the Biden administration for providing this funding, right? Very, very, very great. But I know we have a lot of public comments. It's my understanding we have thirty comments. Is that correct, Speaker Kelly?
At least, at least thirty comments.
I, I just want to make sure, consistent with past policy, consistent with the recent Sandag meeting where we had dozens and dozens of comments. I, I know people want to speak, but if they get to the point and let us know what they want, can we do a minute? I know the last Sandag meeting, people had a minute instead of three minutes to make sure we got through that. Does that sound reasonable, like council colleagues?
I, I think a minute is a bit short, Mr. Mayor. I know we want to bring this, you know, back to a discussion and a decision and all that, but say, you know, be better.
Okay, we can do a minute and a half?
Okay.
Background. Okay. We'll do a minute and a half then.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're going to begin with written comments. We have a whole stack of emails, and I split them with the city manager, and City Manager Hall will begin.
Well, why, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we do that? I mean, it's great to have emails, but people are waiting on the, maybe rather than keep people waiting.
Okay, okay, Mr. Mayor. We do have three raised hands so far. So for those of you participating via Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or enter star nine if you're participating by phone. And the first person who had his raise, his hand raised is Jason Bell. Jason, please unmute yourself and begin. You have, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, was it a minute and a half?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Jason Bell, Executive Board Member of the Imperial Beach Firefighters Association. On behalf of Imperial Beach firefighters, we just want to take a minute to let you know, kind of, some of the things that we have been doing over the past year, dealing with COVID. We have been on watch twenty-four seven, three sixty-five as the community's safety net, providing tirelessly to the community and the citizens and visitors of the Imperial Beach. We've had to work extra while we've had members in quarantine due to exposure to COVID nineteen. Our members have had to work tirelessly with, in the back of their brain, unknowingly, or am I going to take something back from work to my family? Am I going to take something from work and expose my wife, my kids to this deadly disease? We just want to reiterate that every community member, every visitor to the city of Imperial Beach, that we have provided for top-notch health and safety. And with that, we ask that you recognize the hazards that we have faced while dealing with this pandemic and allocate some of those essential worker funds that was identified by City Manager Hall to help recognize the tire- tirelessly commitment that your Imperial Beach firefighters have provided to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Appreciate all your service and sacrifice. Did not go unnoticed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I muted myself. The next speaker is Martha Emerald. Please unmute yourself. Please begin.
Uh, there we go, unmuted. Hi, Marty Emerald again. And just real quick, I know I've got a minute and a half, but I did want to do a shout out to Jason and all of our firefighter paramedic E M Ts. You've done a yeoman's job, and we wouldn't be the same community without you, so thanks. My main purpose here is to speak on behalf of Suncoast, the nonprofit Suncoast Market, under the grants that would be allowed through this, this money. The Suncoast Market's a nonprofit, a many-
The Sun Coast Market is a nonprofit. Many of us in the community are members of it. We've paid in. They're on the verge of being able to build now and they will provide jobs, much needed jobs, about 40, maybe more. And they were I'm sorry. And and they provide nutritious food and if and our health is dependent on having nutritious diets. So I hope that you would consider the the Sun Coast Market for part of that COVID grant. And then a question that I want to pose to anybody who wants to respond, you don't have to tonight, but I want to plant the seed. 170 Palm and the multi-use fields, is it worth it to keep those money at those buildings, those properties pouring more money into it or with the real estate market, the way it is, would it be a better move for the city to sell those properties? And and put that into the general fund and toward many expenses that are needed. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Garcia. David, please unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is David Garcia. I'm the president of SEIU Local 221 and representing the city of Imperial Beach employees. You know, our workers, SEIU is very proud. We worked very hard on the national level to make sure that this ARPA money was available to cities and especially to 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 recover this country, but also for essential workers that had to work on the front lines even while we were all at home with our stay at home orders. And I'll just give examples of some of our members, they still had to come out to work and make sure the sewers were working. Still had to come out and make sure the streets. We still had lifeguards on patrol out there doing life-saving rescues and making sure people were okay and providing public safety on the beaches. We still had our Thailand folks working on the beaches to keep our city clean. So our workers were out there continuous continuously working, even though many of us, like myself, we were at home following the the stay at home order. And many, some of those members also came down with COVID. Some of them, family members came down with COVID. And so this essential worker premium is there to help reward those employees for their sacrifices, for the work that they did to keep our our government going, to keep our city moving. And so I ask you to please use the essential worker premium to reward those workers that have been
David, your time is up.
And and keeping the city going. So thank you very much and I appreciate.
The next speaker is labeled as Sun Coast Market. Please introduce yourself and unmute yourself, unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm sorry, that's my my Zoom always shows up as Sun Coast Market. This is Kim Frank. I'm an IB resident and the elected work president of Sun Coast Market Co-op. One of my fellow board members asked to you her time to me, so I wanted to ask if that would be okay to take a little more time than a minute and a half as I'm speaking on behalf of the Sun Coast Board and our 700 households and businesses. So I just wanted to say with the six and a half million in American Rescue Plan funds, the city can have a huge impact in helping our community recover from the pandemic. And Sun Coast can help the city implement effective strategies that will help residents not only recover but thrive. And investing in Sun Coast will result in long-term systemic community and economic benefits. It will boost our economy by creating 40 new jobs, retaining shopping dollars in IB and drawing shoppers from throughout the region. Help local farms and businesses such as coffee roasters, brewers, soap makers and more by locally sourcing 20 to 30% of our food and products. Will provide a full-service grocery store with a focus on healthy and environmentally sustainable food and products in a community that does not have enough grocery options. Will increase healthy food access for all by offering store discounts to low-income and food insecure households by accepting SNAP benefits and by implementing a healthy staples program with select items offered at or near cost. Will serve as a community health and wellness hub with free and low-cost eating, healthy eating and cooking classes. Be a welcoming community gathering place that fosters social connection.
I'm sorry, that's a minute and a half.
I I I inform Ms. Frank that we she could talk for two minutes because someone else was going to give up their time.
Okay.
Three minutes. I mean, I'm sorry.
Three minutes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So and we'll be protecting the environment through responsible sourcing and green business practices that align with the city's climate action plan. So we are requesting that the city strengthen the mitigation plan by investing more dollars in boosting our local economy and addressing the need for improved access to healthy food, including funding to support the establishment of Sun Coast Market Co-op. This is an urgent request because there are suitable sites available in IB right now, and this opportunity may not come again for several years. So in closing, I just want to emphasize that Sun Coast is more than a grocery store. It is a community asset owned and governed by the community and driven by resident decision-making and leadership. And it is a project that our city will be proud that it helped to create for its citizens. Because as owner member number 26, Dick Pilgrim says, this is by the people for the people. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is labeled Connie IB. Please unmute yourself and begin. You have a minute and a half.
Good afternoon to everybody. I can see on the budget that is the funds only of $250,000 for rental assistance and almost $2 million for parks. Parks are recreational places that are visited by the children, the family members, and I know they have a lot of fun and fun with their families and and it does fine. But due to the pandemic, a lot of those parks are not being used. I still don't understand why the pandemic is being handled by a lot of the leaders of our cities in general. Our priority should be all the families that need rental system should be helped and kept from being homeless. The parks are only used during park hours at night. There are empty. I feel that the park money should be used to keep a roof over those kids that go to the park to have fun and not to be used to sleep on them if they become homeless. Besides, how many money does a park needs to require all those funds? But in those funds can be used for the families and you can change their lives. Thank you very much for your time and I hope next time I get two minutes.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza, please unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name again was Patricia Mendoza. I am a member of ACE, which is the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. And honestly, I agree with Connie. You know, almost $4 million for two parks is kind of, you know, it's way up there when actually people are not going to need the parks if they're going to have another, if we're going to have another shutdown. Because as I see it, you know, schools here in South Bay, okay? And I can say Montgomery, Montgomery High School, thank God, not Mar Vista or not yet, but kids have been already spiking up with COVID. And again, a lot of us, a lot of us have been impacted tremendously because of this pandemic. And I believe that it's, you know, more money should be spent on households because if we can't keep our community safe with COVID around, we're going to be living in these parks, honestly, and I consider myself one of those people. And that's going to be a tremendous ordeal to have to tell my children that we're going to be homeless because of the reason that mommy can't afford the rent right now because mommy still hasn't got her job back or things like that. So honestly, I feel that money well spent should be keeping our community safe, safe from COVID and safe from being homeless. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. If there are any other members of the public participating via Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. Okay, Mr. Mayor, there are no further raised hands. We'll begin with our written comments and City Manager Hall will begin.
Thank you, Mayor. And just before I start, I just want people to know that if we do not get all the way through your comment in the minute and a half, it will be submitted in the record and the council members will get a chance to read those. So I'll get started on this first one sent by Sean Ratliff. Thank you for accepting this email as public comment on the proposal for the use of ARPA funding. I ask that the comment be read aloud. I urge the council to reject the proposal for the use of the ARPA funds in its current form. To begin, the proposal does not align with city pri- the priorities the city previously identified in its response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Small business report, small business support, housing, food access and public health. Less than 4% is designated for business assistance and less than 4% toward housing. There is no money specifically allocated towards providing healthy food to community members, for example, investing in organizations like the Sun Coast Market, whose members came out in force during the pandemic to provide hundreds of boxes for health of healthy food to local families who will provide long-term healthy access to IB. Access to healthy food should be a priority, particularly in a town laden with fast food and other unhealthy food options. Likewise, direct support for public health programs is absent for the proposal except as tangential justifications for capital improvement projects. Indeed, more than 80% of the COVID relief funds are dedicated to improvements to city properties and infrastructure with an emphasis on parks and recreation. I have no doubt that these are worthy projects, but within the framework of providing COVID relief, a resurfaced soccer field, improvements to a sports park and paved alleys would not be my priority. I therefore ask the council to rethink its allocations and prioritize funding for access to healthy food and public health. There's about a, there's about a paragraph left that will be included in the record. The next comment is from Robert Miller. Dear Mayor and council members, please consider funding for a master plan for sports park as the first step in planning for improvements. With 1.9 million available and an active park and recreation department, it is time for a long-term plan. Council members and staff have more than enough familiarity on the needs for the highest and best use of this space. As a business assistance funding, the Sun Coast Market Co-op is deserving of financial support from funds available. There are now over 700 household and business owners who are invested in the South County's first food cooperative. Fresh, local and healthy foods, support for local farms and job creation will benefit our residents. Sincerely, Bob Miller. Excuse me. The next item is submitted from Josie Hamada. Consideration of Resolution 2021-48 Establishing the City of Imperial Beach American Rescue Plan Act. Good evening, City Manager Hall, Mayor and City Council. Under this, I under this number three, I can see, read the title projects and the money amount for each category, but I didn't see explanations slash details on where the money would be used. Normally in previous budgets, I'm able to see, but not this time. It would have been much appreciated if those details were also shared and posted. Josie Hamada. The next item is from Diane Rose. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, I know that you are all too familiar of the economic and health impacts our community has suffered and is still combating the effects of the COVID pandemic. The Sun Coast Market proposal addresses so many of these issues now facing our disadvantaged residents. Please consider approving this funding request as a much-needed start in the recovery of as a city and a community. As a former mayor, I want to thank you personally so much for all of your efforts during these challenging times. I know that this council has foresight and the fortitude to take the necessary steps to address this crisis by moving us forward by approving this request. Thank you so much for your consideration. Diane Rose. The next one is from Robin Abadi. Hello, my name is Robin Abadi. I am writing to let you know that we really need this money for healthy food in Imperial Beach. So many of us have to go so far to get healthy food for our families. And yes, we need nice parks and updates on them. But I also feel the as for the community, you have nothing there for the new co-ops like the Sun Coast Market, which I am a member of, and also for the neighborhood center that feeds people on a regular basis. It would really help our community if you could delegate money for these things. Thank you so much. The next comment is from Terry H. I'm sorry, down at the bottom, Terry Huckabee. To whom it may concern. As a returning and proud IB resident and homeowner, nutrition, weight control, business owner, proud member and early volunteer of the Sun Coast Market, I request that the city make a strategic investment that will improve access to healthy groceries and support local farms and businesses by allocating funding from the federal COVID relief funds and other sources for Sun Coast Market Co-op. I hope this unique financial opportunity to support Sun Coast will not be missed. With our ever-increasing population, there is more need and demand than ever for healthy food and healthier citizens. For the long term, our community, for the long-term health of our community, it's an obvious health decision. And I believe your future self will thank you. I know mine will. The fact that health education and giving back to the community goes hand in hand with the Sun Coast Co-op and has already been proven time and time again. I hope the decision is a no-brainer as it will make an undeniable positive impact in the future of our great community and the everyday health of our residents. Not to mention visitors excited to shop at a healthy, cool grocery store similar to People's Food Market in Ocean Beach. Eating is something everyone does every single day and the food choices one has available to them and gets to make affects all areas of living. 10 plus years of counseling clients, I have seen firsthand in myself and others how healthy eating, nutritious whole feuds is the most beneficial thing we can do for ourselves and our loved ones to live our best lives while being there for others as well. And there's just a little bit left. Again, sincerely, Terry Huckabee. The next one is from Beverly Florence. It is no secret that despite being a wealthy nation, many residents regularly experience hunger and food insecurity. In recent years, the public has become more and more aware of the critical role played by access to healthy food. Our community in Imperial Beach and neighboring cities have limited access to helpful and affordable food. What remains are highly processed food, fast food restaurants and the corner convenience stores that offer the same. Grocery co-ops are more than just a grocery store. They provide ongoing education on health and well-being of residents in the community in which they serve. The cities in which they exist reap the benefits of a store of this caliber financially. They focus on strengthening the community as they move forward on the path of healthier lifestyles and practices of ecological sustainability. I highly support Sun Coast Market and their presence in Imperial Beach. It will improve our landscape. Co-ops hold the community to a to a higher good on many levels. My heart is bursting with hope and pride to be a resident of Imperial Beach. I implore city officials to allow financial support to the efforts of Sun Coast Market. I am grateful for the opportunity to share my voice and to thank you for your time. Best regards. The next item is from John Keating. Dear Mayor DeDina and City Council Members, please allocate $800,000 of funding from the 6.5 million of ARPA funds that the city received to Sun Coast Market Co-op. Funding Co-op is funding Sun Coast is a long-term investment in our community that will improve the lives of Imperial Beach residents at all income levels and return sales tax revenues to the city every year. This is a win-win for the city. Sun Coast is at a critical stage and this needs and needs this funding to continue the process of carrying a site for the store and bringing local healthy food to IB. Please have this email read aloud into the record. Thank you for your consideration and leadership on this issue. John Keating. Next comment is from Anna Kirschner. Dear council members. Hi, my name is is Annie Kirschner and my husband Craig and I are big supporters and owners of the Sun Cast, Sun Coast Market Co-op. I personally have donated my time for the past six years to get a store that I can finally feel good about for myself and my family's day-to-day most basic needs. We feel strong, we strongly believe that access to healthy food in a city that is over saturated with fast food restaurants desperately needs the support from both our community and our city. Every person in our city and nearby neighborhoods will benefit from a market like this, whether in the form of healthy groceries, positive employment or tax dollars. Please consider allocating extremely useful funds from the COVID relief fund and other sources for the Sun Coast Market Co-op. The next item is from Karen Clay. As an IB resident and founder of nonprofit, I love to glean. I request that the city make a strategic investment that will improve access to healthy food and support local farms and businesses by allocating funding from federal, federal COVID relief funds and other sources for I Love to Glean and Sun Coast Market Co-op. Both businesses are essential infrastructure requirements in in providing healthy and equitable food system throughout the South County region of San Diego County. I Love to Glean is a fiscally sponsored nonprofit corporation that operates a countywide food recovery system. Since its inception of April 2020, that operates a countywide food recovery system. Since its inception of April twenty twenty, I Love to Glean has received and delivered over three point five million pounds of nourishing food with a retail value of over three point five million and distributed that to residents in need in San Diego County. The food was distributed to over one hundred and fifteen thousand families or four hundred and sixty thousand individuals through its extensive countywide network. I Love to Glean's mission is to partner with owners, with others to facilitate countywide food recovery systems that increase the capacity for recovery and distribution of otherwise wasted food to agencies serving those in need. We work directly with feeding agencies and kitchens who then distribute to end clients. We are an all-volunteer organization that is looking for a new low, no-cost warehouse as well as additional transportation and warehouse equipment in the South County region to be able to run our South County food hub. And the rest will be included in the record from Karen Clay. The next item is from Ramon Hernandez. Comment on Agenda Item Report Three, American Rescue Plan. And the attached letter says, "Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager and Staff. I'm here to comment on Agenda Item Report Three, Consideration of Resolution twenty-one forty-eight establishing the City of Imperial Beach American Rescue Plan Act Mitigation Program. Prior to the COVID outbreak, I had conversations with many of you on implementing a health-in-all-policies approach as the city builds and budgets. Tonight I come to you with a different proposition, one of an equity-in-all policies approach. An approach that responds to the ongoing long-term impacts of COVID and can also set up the City of Imperial Beach for a healthier future. In addition to the health and public impacts of COVID, there are three areas which, there are three areas in which there have been the greatest disparities: economic, housing and food access and nutrition. The proposed budget specifically addresses as a line item expenditures only two of these items. The American Rescue Plan Act awards Imperial Beach approximately six point five million. I acknowledge that this is a small, that this is a small budget and that projects worthy of consideration are many, a few of which have been on the city's list of unfunded projects for more than a few years. Yet this funding provides a unique opportunity to reflect on the current and long-term impacts of COVID to IB residents and how to best budget non-recurring systemic investments in a city and infrastructure that will continue to help residents thrive and be healthy post-pandemic. And the rest of the comment from Dr. Hernandez will be included in the record. And Mayor, I'm going to turn some time over to Jackie because I have to go get some oxygen.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have a few more here.
Oh, thanks, Annie. I realized that was challenging, so, anyway, good one.
The first message I have is from Richard Pilgrim, and he says, "Mayor, Council and Staff, I wish to speak to exhibit A Budget for ARPA Funding Expenditures, pages six through eight. I wish to address the projects related to the rehabilitation of two important city facilities, improvements to the Imperial Beach Sports Park and improvements to the city-owned facility at one seventy Palm Avenue. First, I agree wholeheartedly with the need to rehabilitate both the city-owned properties. My concern is that these be done with some related planning for current and future uses. This money gives IB an unprecedented opportunity to do up, to do needed upgrades and updates, but let's be sure we do both facilities right. The recreation building at Sports Park should be a key multi-use facility in IB's beleaguered recreation program. I pro- I propose that the rehabilitation of the facility be done in the context of the Recreation Program Master Plan to be developed by the new Recreation Department using public input. There are many demands placed on, on use of this building, and any updates must be sufficiently flexible to meet these needs. We need to do this building right this time around. The one seventy Palm Avenue Building is a major opportunity for the City of IB to develop a multi-use facility for common use. If any public building in IB ever needed a master plan, this one certainly does. It is a good ghost building for most of us in the community. It is hard." Okay, there's only a little bit left, and that will be saved for the record, and that again was from Richard Pilgrim. The next set of email messages, there are twenty, and they are substantially the same. So what I will do is first read the names of the people that submitted the email and then the comment that they all shared, that is pretty much identical. So the people who submitted similar email messages is Karen Clay, Cheryl Lear Schuminski, Carmen Calavera, Cameron Snyder, Harry White, Andrew Malden, Annie Pilgrim, Anne Pilgrim, someone with the I say, I S A Y E R S, Holly Misselli, Tiffany Uranga, Susan Berry, Joyce Puddleston, Heather Stanley, Joanna San Sotera, Nellie Sand, Karen Thompson, Ellis David, Richard Robinson, and Cindy, oh, I'm so wrong, Cindy Fitzgerald, and then Cindy, Carl and Carl Bradley. And the statement that they all share is, "As an IB resident and member of Sun Coast Market, I request that the city make a strategic investment that will improve access to healthy food and support local farms and businesses by allocating funding from federal COVID relief funds and other sources for Sun Coast Market Co-op." And then the next ten messages include that same statement with additional information. So again, these are ten messages with that same comment with additional information. So this message is from Stacy Tabor, and she says, "We owe it to our children to provide access to healthy food. Sun Coast Market can have a great effect on our community and support local farmers." The next message is from Jesus Gonzalez, and again, he has the same comment as the others, but then includes, "I've heard from a number of people that the proposed expenses for the COVID relief funds include large amounts of funds for long outstanding city projects, and then in parentheses, a park, allies, question mark, and comparatively very small amounts of, for projects that address current COVID relief needs such as food insecurity, housing and business assistance loans. Please reconsider your budget allocations regardless of the broad scope of allowances that the federal government is accepting as justifiable for the City of Imperial Beach." The next message is from Mel Lyons, and the additional information that Mel included was, "Such an investment affirms your commitment to the health of citizens and visitors of our beautiful town. One of IB's biggest deficiencies is lack of access to quality food. Nearly the only reason I lit, I leave IB is to buy organic produce, dairy, bulk foods and groceries. I'd rather spend my money in town and ride my bike to get it. I urge you to provide meaningful financial support, which not only will advance the Co-op's opening date, but also demonstrate to other funders, county, state, federal and foundations that the stated support for the city is more than words. There is no more important time than now for your, for you to make this commitment. Respectfully, Mel Lyons." The next message is from Brooke Truesdale, and the additional information she included is, "This is a strategic investment that aligns with the guiding principles of the ARPA funding to promote our community's recovery from the pandemic and will be a source of pride for all residents for years to come. Investing in South County's first food cooperative will benefit thousands of IB residents, not just a few. Not only will the store increase equitable access to quality food for all residents, but it will also create forty new jobs and support many small businesses and farms. Sincerely, Brooke Truesdale." The next message is from Dave Ray, and his additional comment or additional info is, "Sun Coast Market Co-op is one of the best local initiatives that will help improve local wellness for both the citizens and small businesses in the area. They deserve to be included in any public monies to improve overall economic prosperity for Imperial Beach and the South Bay as a whole. Thanks and have a profitable day. Dave Ray." The next message is from Sandy Brillhart, and her additional mess- message is, "Food co-ops benefit the communities in which they are located in many ways. Data shows that for every one thousand dollars spent at a co-op, one thousand six hundred dollars is generated in the local economy. Food co-ops spend more on local wages and benefits than conventional grocery stores and engage in more sustainable business practices. In short, investing in Sun Coast Market is investing in the well-being of Imperial Beach. Sandy Brillhart." The next message is from Christie Andrew Hescola, and their statement includes, "A healthy farm-to-table food co-op is a major resource and basic need that is lacking in Imperial Beach. We have to drive to other towns and spend other, I'm sorry, spend our time and money shopping in other towns to meet this basic need. It would be great to spend our tax dollars in our hometown. Thank you for your consideration, Christie Andrew Hescola." The next one, next message is from Tracy Eckert, and her additional message is, "Our children, our families and our schools deserve nourishing real food. We have a chance to do things differently by putting the health of our community and people first." The next message is from Carol Tenenbaum, and her additional message is, "Imperial Beach has led a number of efforts to improve the health of not only our residents, but also those of neighboring communities. Ensuring, ensuring the opening of Sun Coast Market Co-op will provide yet another critical service and business that will improve healthy living. Carol Tenenbaum." The next message states, it is from, oh, I read this one already, it's Brooke Truesdale, sorry about that. The final message is from Sue Florence, and her additional comment was, or is, "While I do not reside in Imperial Beach, my sister lives there and I visit her at least three times a week. While in Imperial Beach, I routinely take advantage of the resources available to the public and would love to shop at Sun Coast Market Co-op as many primary, as my primary source for grocery shopping. I have been following the market's progress over the last two years, and I'm confident to offer healthy foods and their support of local farms and businesses will be an asset to Imperial Beach. I strongly urge you to consider investing funds and other sources to Sun Coast Market Co-op. All my best, Sue Florence." And Mr. Mayor, that was the final written comment.
Great. I'd like to enter a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight, establishing the Imperial Beach American Rescue Plan Mitigation Plan, Act Mitigation Plan, but modify that business assistance program to include six hundred thousand dollars for economic investment, but make sure that has a include language that would allow healthy food or health-related, I guess, businesses. And then number two, it seemed that we forgot a whole swath of the community in terms of recreational and parks, and so could we modify the budget to include at least three hundred thousand for the north of Palm for recreational and park amenities that would serve children as well as Matthew Leba Gonzalez's, or district, is that district four? That part of town that we have, again, has been left out of this area. Is that district four, district one? I can't remember.
District four, Mayor.
Yeah, so anyway, if that's, if we can modify the budget, but that would seem to make that geographically represented, and maybe we could allocate funding from different sources for that.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, are we going to have a discussion?
Sure, we can have a discussion.
I think, great, I, those are great thoughts, and I know you-
Remember, Gary, did you want to start?
Councilmember Spriggs is speaking.
Yeah, I'm just complimenting the mayor. I think those are some great thoughts. We should note them, write them down, because I'm sure we all have some, you know, related, maybe even similar thoughts, but a discussion is really in order, so I'm for that. Thank you.
Well, I've made a motion, so there's a motion on the table.
Well, your motion is very premature compared to how we usually do business, Mr. Mayor. Normally, we have a council discussion, and then we have some sort of a consensus and a motion coming out of that.
Well, no, we can, let's, let's have a discussion. Councilmember Gary, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll go first. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone who sent in their comments and ideas and concerns. I very much appreciated hearing from everyone and everyone's perspective. I think that in general, the way that the plan has been presented, I mean, obviously, we want to support purchasing of HVAC filters to keep our staff fit, safe. We definitely need to invest in recapturing expenses incurred and invest in necessary repairs. I concur, obviously, that outdoor recreation is important to give our residents an opportunity to recreate for free. However, I do believe that COVID has had devastating effects on our residents' health, on their housing and on their economic well-being. I believe that we should reallocate the funding towards these areas. Food relief, whether it should be through a competitive process from our local nonprofits to make it more equitable. That's something we can engage in discussion. I absolutely echo the, the, the need of addressing our, our food desert here in Imperial Beach and, and giving accessibility of, of healthy foods is important. I certainly saw that firsthand as Chair of the High Risk Population Subcommittee of the Mayor's COVID nineteen Task Force. And during the two food drives that we co-hosted with the San Diego Building Trades, where we fed over one thousand families in need, I, I got, I had the, the privilege and honor to speak to a lot of these families who were close to tears because they were in such great need. I also believe that despite the fact that we have through the county, state and federal funding, something close to a hundred and seventy million dollars available for rental assistance, a lot of folks are still falling through the cracks. They're not understanding how to apply for these programs. They're not understanding what documentation is necessary. And our very own Mr. Wolf, our housing specialist, is doing everything he can to assist our residents in navigating that not-so-easy process. I know that he's been hitting the, the, the streets and knocking on doors and doing everything he can. But I think that some of this funding could be made, could be made available to hire a temporary contractor who can help these folks navigate this difficult process through education, through outreach and through casework, so that he could be supported, especially by someone who is bilingual, who can help our non-native English speakers here in IB. I just think that in, in, in principle, allocating only three point eight percent of the six point five million dollars towards housing and assistance for our small struggling businesses that I hear from regularly that are still being impacted, especially minority-owned businesses here in IB would be the way to go, given that the intent of this bill, of this funding is for equitable access to address economic impacts, small businesses, households, public health emergencies. I'd also like to see part of this funding support our workforce through hazardous pay. They have been at the forefront, you know, enjoying family members and friends falling ill, and they continue to do so as we enter this whatever number of wave it is now with Delta variant and the new Delta Plus variant, so as it stands right now, I would not be able to support the plan as it has been drafted. I would be supportive and would like, I know, Mayor, you've already made a motion, but I would be supportive of continuing the item so that we could hear even more from our community and rethink how the allocation of these resources will be spent. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Leba Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Agetti brings a, a great point. It, I have a question. It, these funds, do they have to be spent by a particular date? Because I, my belief is it benefits everyone, primarily individuals that are in my particular district, so that we can readjust some of the numbers, just like you had suggested, Mayor. Because I know there are a lot of, a lot more apartments and a lot more individuals that are renting, that are experiencing these issues, not being able to pay for their rent due to COVID, due to losing their jobs, so I believe that our residents of Imperial Beach should be recipients of more of the funds to help them during this- our residents of Imperial Beach should be recipients of more of the funds to help them during this time. And I also believe that Sun Coast definitely can be a recipient of some of these funds as well because they are very compassionate and are very positive and with their ideas of, of, of supporting and, and providing good, healthy food to the community. But I also believe that the upgrades to the sports park in 170 Palm Avenue, so I, I would like for this to be analyzed if there's not a, a, a time restraints as far as this money and spending the money so that we all can come to an agreement and allocate the funds, maybe adjust it a little differently so that all of those entities can be positively affected by it. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher.
Thanks, Mr. Spriggs. You know, I do have, I'd just like to ask some clarifying questions if I could to City Manager Hall. Now, we've heard a lot of support from Sun Coast. Now, would, would a, a group like Sun Coast be available to receive funds from ARPA? You know, I think it's a reminder for us that this isn't our city budget. These are special funds that come from the, the federal government for specific uses. And I think that what, what's been happening is, or what city staff has presented to us is based on those types of projects, if you will, that do check those boxes. So I'm just, I'm just curious, Andy, if you could just clarify for us.
Thank you, Councilman Fisher. This is, this is Manager Hall. So I think that it, it certainly warrants the, uh, working with the city attorney and going back and making sure that providing money to a, a food co-op that, that didn't exist during COVID is, is a valid expenditure. I think it warrants certainly going back and looking at that. I, I hope that, again, I tried to stay at the beginning of this and I think that's what you might be leading to. This is a plan that we brought to the city council as, as a starting point for, I'm trying to answer two questions and one here. As a starting point for the city council to be able to look at the, the potential of spending this and to, to, again, it's easier to critique than it is to create sometimes. So it may be narrowed down on some things that, where cities have been encouraged to go through the Department of Treasury and in expenditures of these funds. And so we've kind of followed the guidance that we've been receiving from the Department of the Treasury, other cities and some of those, some of those ideas. For example, there was, there was some discussion about, well, I'm, I'm going to go back and answer Councilman Leba Gonzalez's question because I think it goes to this. The funds do have to be spent before December of 2024 or by December 31st of 2024. So there's a timeline expended to funds. And that's why we're bringing this to you now. No matter what project it seems we get involved in, it takes many months, right, to move projects through to fruition. And so what we don't want to be is up against the window where we haven't taken advantage of this very rare opportunity. And because we didn't have our ducks in a row and have our programs and our projects going, that we end up having to give this money back to the federal government at a time when this is really an opportunity to invest in our community. So we're trying to jump on this early, provide you with some guidance. You know, clearly, let's be, let's be clear. I, I want to take the full blame or, or credit or whatever the right word is for this. Staff, including your city manager, is going to look at this from a very staff perspective. There are, this, this is an opportunity to do something in the community that we get asked about a lot. Our recreation facilities in 170 Palm are not in good condition. In fact, 170 Palm can't be occupied and needs some serious renovation before it could be occupied and used. And so otherwise it's going to sit and decay. So, so what I, what I, when I found out that that is not only eligible, but one of the, one of the things that the Department of the Treasury has encouraged is the, is the money to be used for recreation programs. That's why it's on there. It's, it wasn't to create competition between any of these things. It was, again, perhaps through a staff lens to look at the needs of the community and see how we could use these resources to further things that we've been trying to do and never have an opportunity to do frankly, or rarely have an opportunity to do. So it, it was, it was strategic. It was, it wasn't intended to be competitive. It was intended to be strategic and to take care of some, some needs that the city has had for a long time. There was some discussion about, for instance, rental assistance. And I think that that's important in our community. The county has, as, as Councilwoman Aggiri addressed, the county has indicated that there are still a lot of funding available at the county level for rental assistance. A lot in the hundreds of millions for rental assistance that Imperial Beach residents are eligible for. One of the challenges they have is understanding how to access that money. So, so perhaps, and, and one of the things that they have told us with ARPA is that we should not use ARPA funds for things that are otherwise available, funding, funding that's otherwise available, relief funding that's already been out there. But what we might be able to do though is make sure that perhaps we, we hire an, an employee for the next several months to help our, our residents understand how to access that rental assistance. That's the biggest problem is anytime you're getting money from government, it's, it sounds really simple. It's never as simple as it sounds. And so, so maybe that's something that we could do to help people with, with rental assistance. So again, I know I'm throwing a lot of things out there, but what we wanted to do was get this process started as early as possible, get on the path to getting some of these things, you know, at least on the radar screen so that we can meet those relatively tight, tight guidelines of spending that money within the window that was identified by the federal government.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mr. Hall, Mr. Spriggs, something on. I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher, I'm sorry.
I, I had a few more. I just, I was hoping to get an answer out of Andy and of course he, no receiver, he gave me three answers and four more questions. So that's great. So, you know, th- this is where I'm, again, for me, the whole plan sounds really good. The numbers are super vague, except for the one for the, the redo of the soccer field over in Veterans Park. I'm, I'm sure that one was done last night. So it has dollars associated with it. And, you know, for me, I'd want to see it just clarify a little bit. And one of my concerns is that, you know, we want to set this money aside. We want to do these projects, but we haven't really done a whole lot of research because of the, the crunch time that, that exists for us. I know that we've received one, one of the deposits and I, I don't know when the other one's coming. So I understand the need for creating a plan to get this done. My concern is that with the inevitable inflation that's going to hit our economy in the next, you know, six, eight, 10 months, when it's coming, their dollars aren't going to stretch very far. And if we've allocated all of our funds to this point, at some point, we're going to run out of money and then who loses? Who do we tell that we can't fund them? If this was, if all the money was in the bank right now, then we could probably do a little bit better. But the truth of it is, is that we only have half the money in the bank. So we've got to be very strategic in how we spend this and where it's actually allocated and just making sure it does fit all things. I'm 100% for the sports park, for 170 Palm. I think those two areas, as was mentioned earlier, by one of our residents who spoke up, they're, they're really dilapidated and they're, they're not fit for their purpose. So if we could do that, because we've done that so well around the city, we've taken areas of the city that have been neglected. For whatever reason, if we've turned it around, whether that's from the city point or private investing, it's been fantastic. Look at what's happening on Seacoast and through Palm. It's, it's amazing to me. So I think that we do need to continue to discuss, discussion. However, I'm, I want to be very cautious to, to the members of the C Council and the residents and to understand that a series of workshops that are going to take months to, to develop may not be in our best interest because we've got to get moving now. The money, half the money is in the bank and it has to be put towards some projects. And I'd hate to put a stop on any of that going forward because we're trying to vet this out and it's hard. These are the hard decisions we make because when it comes to, to money that seems free and, you know, that we could use it for whatever we want. Everybody's got their hand out. We want to be smart. We want to help everybody to do what needs to be done, but we can't make everybody happy. So my suggestion is that we can continue it, that we do figure out a way to keep some reserves to be smart, knowing that we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We can only guess. And then to just kind of trim around the edges here and, and make sure that what we're allocating actually will, will fit the bill for what's needed to be done. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry about calling on Mr. Spriggs. Um, Mr. Spriggs. Councilmember Spriggs.
Professor, whatever. Mayor, I, I'm sorry for being so abrupt in my response to your motion. That could have been done a lot more diplomatically and, and I did not mean any offense.
Oh, no worries at all. Absolutely not.
I, I think that the idea of looking at the spatial allocations that you suggested in terms of the nor- north of Palm and District Four, where the, some of the greater needs are, goes without saying, and I'm not sure that the current proposed plan addresses that. This kind of goes to points that some other council members have made, that this seems set in stone. And here we are, you know, one, a, a few days to look at this in advance and now a city council discussion and then bam, the concrete is poured into these slots. And although I agree, we don't have forever, we don't have months, probably not even a lot of weeks to, to finalize this plan. We probably do need a little bit more thought and even if it means we have to have a special meeting. We've gotten a lot of public comment. There's a lot of interest in this. Six million is a lot of money for Imperial Beach. We shouldn't rush it, but at the same time, if we need to meet more regularly to deal with it, we should do it. Now, I, I only have one area that I'm, that I'm really wanting to focus on for a couple of comments. And that is 170 Palm. As mentioned during a couple of different budget items, we really need revenue. And we need to take advantage of our location and we need to take advantage especially of city-owned property that is in prime location and determine what the highest and best use is it, it is. And I don't, Marty suggested selling it. That's a one-time budget benefit. I think we need to, and we've talked about this over the years. I think we need to look at ways of generating ongoing income from 170, whether it's some form of joint venture where we get TOT or sales tax or participation in, in profits or whatever. We need a, a long-term source of revenue from our prime property, which that is. I think that the Sun Coast ideas could tie in with this. It could be that that building might be a, a site with modifications that could be used by Sun Coast for their market. That's something that we need to look at as well as other income generating uses. And I say income generating because although they're a co-op, they're going to need to buy a building or rent a building, lease it anyway. So if the city did a, a joint venture or partnership, took care of prepping the building and then had, with these funds, and then had some of the health outcomes that we're all talking about and that are consistent with the ARPA language. And we did that through a lease, a longer term lease to the co-op where we got a certain amount of lease revenue from it over a period of time. That might be a solution that solves both problems. There could also be, you know, county staff in one of the offices in that building or whatever, but the, the principal use would be an income generating use that would meet the needs of the community and would have a lot of community support with those 700 members of the co-op. And I must disclose I'm one of them.
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is City Attorney Lyon. I just wanted to, to recommend that we, there's lots of laws that could impact, you know, 170 Palm and/or any private entity. So I would just suggest that we, you know, not engage in a full discussion related to that until we have done some further research if, you know, if that's, that's the direction.
Well, that's exactly what I'm suggesting and I appreciate that comment. I think we need to do some further research on the highest and best use of that prime real estate for the people of Imperial Beach. And that may not just be the provision of government services out of the building. It may mean that there are other services that would be income generating and still benefit the people of Imperial Beach. That's all that I'm saying. And I think we need time to consider that. And I mentioned, I mentioned Sun Coast only because most of the public comment came from Sun, about Sun, Sun Coast. And there may be a way to meld these. I'm not saying that there is. It's something that needs to be looked into. There may be other uses that would be better for everybody. I'm just thinking on that. That's, that's the most complicated.
Councilman Spriggs, may, maybe since Jennifer already interrupted you, I'm going to, I, I would like to interrupt just real quick and because you were talking about 170 Palm. So a couple of things, we actually toured the 170 Palm facility with the Sun Coast Market. They looked at it and they weren't, they were not interested in that location. So it doesn't meet their, their requirements for size and, and some of those kinds of things. So they, they let us know they weren't interested in that building. But I think you're, I think you're a good, I, I want to make sure that the council knows that this wasn't necessarily willy-nilly. We, we agree. I think that 170 Palm needs to be used very carefully. One of the things we're looking at in our recreation program is we have to be able to generate enough revenue to keep the, the recreation program solvent. And so one of the things we're trying to do is make sure that they have an opportunity to raise revenues in, in classes and some of those things. And 170 Palm could be a revenue generator for the city. Not only in that way, but maybe in creation of a room that could be rented out to different nonprofits to hold, to hold meetings or, or something like that. So, yeah, all those things are really, really important that you're mentioning. But the, the biggest challenge we have with 170 Palm is that with the new AB 1486, there are very strict limitations on what the city can do with any of its surplus property, who they can sell it to, what it can be used for. And those are brand new bills that came from the state legislature. So we have, we have a lot, and I think that's what Jennifer was referring to, is we have a lot of restrictions now on what public property can be used for if it's not used by the city for a municipal purpose.
Yeah. And all I'm saying is we have a, a strong need for revenue that's prime real estate. We're creative people. We can retain creative people to figure out how to make, how to make something out of that, that building. We don't want to build in recurrent costs to, to the building that we can't cover. For example, having to staff it or depending on the county to staff it, that may be good for the next two years, but it may be good, not be good in the long term. So I'm just saying, we need, we need a longer term solution for that building. I appreciate the creativity in, in melding it to the ARPA criteria. But I, I really think that that's too valuable, an asset to just, I'm not saying that's not where we end up, but I think we need to, to take a look at all the alternatives for it, including income generating alternatives. So rather than risk further interruption by anybody, the professor yields back to the, to the mayor.
Great. Thanks, everybody. So, you know, I just want to make sure, um, people complain about government moving too slowly. And we said, I've, what I've heard my colleagues say is that we need to move more slowly. We need to help people and make a difference, but move really slowly. We have the opportunity to move quickly to make a historic transformational difference for the people of Imperial Beach who have suffered. But there's two models of, of doing that. We can make these transformational investments in the community that produce an output, health and, and, and well-being. And that includes funding a food co-op that would be part of our economic investment package. Co-ops are economic enterprises. They employ people, generate revenue, just like any other business. They're just a cooperative model. So they don't generate a profit that goes to shareholders. They prove dividends that go back to the co-op. So that's one thing. But that could be for other economic assets as well. Two, we have an historic equity investment issue in the city of Imperial Beach where this city for 60 years or 70 years made calculated decisions to stop investing in our community. They stopped funding parks and rec. We stopped making available community assets, community meeting rooms. We stopped investing in nonprofits. We stopped investing in the social benefit of our, our residents and they suffered. Our children suffered because even though they had the same access to their parents, and my parents had got, my dad, when I was unemployment or got food from, I forget, the federal food program, and my dad lost his job. We still had access to unemployment benefits. We still had access to unemployment benefits, welfare benefits, et cetera. But what our kids did historically is never had access to was a swimming pool. We didn't have access to parks. We didn't have access to parks and rec programs. Our moms and dads and families didn't have access to cooking classes and health classes, like every other city. And so literally every other city in Southern California, because the city made a decision that that wasn't important. So I think with this money transformationally, we have the opportunity to right those wrongs, to to make sure that we invest and recovery and rescue, right? We can't make up for what happened over the last fifteen months. We we just can't, we can't. And for each individual family, but we can't provide an investment for the future to make sure that our children don't have the highest obesity rates in San Diego County, some of the highest child poverty rates in San Diego County, and some of the highest. Let's say, oh, access to parks issue and then the highest access unfortunately impact to air pollution and sewage pollution in the county. So we have a lot of rights to me wrong. I would hope that we can move quickly to spend money. You know, there are private philanthropy models that move. I work with foundations so slow. It's actually shocking to see how slow the wealthiest people in the world give out money. Kenzie Scott Phillips has done that differently, which is just handing out money, which is great, but not to individuals, to organizations. So I would hope that if my colleagues decide that we need to move a little bit more slowly, that it's maybe one more meeting. I've never heard anyone in a in a community complain that things, we we did things, we accomplished things too quickly, ever. Never, it's never happened. So let's just make sure that we're the government, the city council that's deciding to do things really well, really quickly and get things done to help our residents, rather than say we're going to spend our time on bureaucracy. Hiring more bureaucrats to do the jobs that people at the county of San Diego and the state of California and the federal government do. I I look at the Twitter account and feed and the and the Facebook feed of the county. They have legions of people on the on the payroll to help do these programs. And no one at the state, federal, or county level can give out money right now. They're not, it's a, it's a national disaster that they cannot, people aren't getting this money. So I'm not sure how we can add to that by adding more money that we can't give away. We're not a foundation. We don't have a criteria for how we give out money to individuals. What's the criteria that we decide? Who who's eligible? How do we do that? Do we become a foundation? Do we have giving guidelines? So I I think those are all issues we have to address if we're talking about giving more money to individuals or rent relief. I don't want to duplicate the billions of dollars that are sitting in government accounts that have not been used. So anyway, let's, let's just make sure we're clear on what we can do and can't do. The city is great at infrastructure. We're great at creating facilities that can make a difference, but we have to make that up for the historic wrongs that we've done. And that didn't. Our kids not having health access to healthy food, our kids not having access to recreational services. And I I've been come from an immigrant family where my dad was unemployed and my parents valued parks. And we've seen the way that people needed parks during and the beaches and access to parks during this pandemic. I'm very concerned that we pit parks against helping poor people. Poor people need parks too. Those kids that play in our parks are not from wealthy families. They're from low-income families and they need those parks. So anyway, that's my soapbox. I'm glad to to let this go, but I'm going to hold all of us accountable. And I will go publicly to say that my colleagues said that government must be slower, that we must do things slower when the world being being slow is what got us in this mess. And that's something we pushed on in the water quality debate, and we're going to continue to push on. This is to make up for the sixty years of wrongs that we've done in this community. So that's my soapbox. And I'm glad to rescind my motion. My colleagues want to stay this issue and spend more time deliberating, but I'm going to be the one saying we need to speed up and 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 get and figure it out quickly. So if that's it, I think we're just staying, we're just going to stay and continue this to the next council meeting. Is that correct?
Mister Mayor, if I might ask you a question and the city manager. Andy, do you have enough from the comments that the mayor and other council members and I have made to to come back with some further thoughts on on these items?
Councilman Spriggs, this is Manager Hall. Thank you very much. Yeah, I, you know what? I think this has been, again, and perhaps I set it up wrong. This has been very helpful because what we really needed, we're trying to put together a plan. And we understood that this first rendition might not be it. But we we want to keep moving things quickly and and I'll I'll say it again, that any of these numbers can be moved. And it was easier to give you something to critique than to to go to a meeting without anything to look at and try to create it from scratch. So so it has, I think, even the numbers we put in there, whether they're right or wrong, I think it has spurred some really good conversation. Some really good direction from the city council. So, yeah, I think, I think with the information we have, we can certainly move closer to addressing some of those things that were identified tonight. The food security, making sure that there are facilities in the more economically challenged parts of our community. Making sure that we we include, you know, the the needs of our residents, individual residents and businesses along with the investments in the recreational facilities that we hope will benefit the entire community. So so I think we can certainly get closer, whether or not we can present something at your next meeting that you guys will all give us a standing ovation for. I don't know. But yeah, the input has been incredibly helpful. And that's what tonight was about. And so we really appreciate it. Yeah, we 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 certainly want to get things moving. It's hard to believe how quickly time will pass. And so we we just want to make sure that we are on a, on a, on a course where we can keep this moving forward, only because, you know, we we've talked to so many cities and and they're struggling with what we are. How you're going to spend, have have this once-in-a-lifetime really unique opportunity and yet spend it in a very tight timeframe for government wheels. Getting a project done and and funded and designed and paid for in two years. You got, you guys have been on the council long enough. That's, that means we're just, we're just trying to get started as quickly as possible because two years just flies by. And then that, that's why we're trying to get started.
Mister Hall, please don't apologize. You guys did a great job coming up with the most progressive, far-reaching investment in our community in the history of Imperial Beach. I want to make sure that's clear. This was a progressive plan to invest and put the money first and foremost into the health and welfare and safety of our children and our families to recover and rescue from the greatest pandemic of the twenty-first century, obviously, in the last hundred years. So thank you for doing that. I think discussion has been great. I think we can reach, obviously, consensus on this and get more feedback from the community. But you guys did an outstanding job and your only thought was to help the people of Imperial Beach. So.
I have a a point of clarity, just for the sake of Andy and staff. Just in case it wasn't clear, I would like to see something closer to fifteen percent for housing household assistance and fifteen percent for small businesses and something closer to fifteen percent for essential worker hazardous pay. Rather than having it be three point eight percent of the total budget. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. That would be, you know, in my opinion, progressive. And also, I would say, you know, yes, we want to be nimble, we want to be fast, but this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and we want to make sure we do it right. So at least one or two more council meetings where we have the opportunity to have a broader discussion is merited in my, thank you very much.
Well, let's just not replicate private foundations that move at glacial pace and and making decisions, strategic philanthropic decisions. Let's try to be better than government, better than philanthropy and faster so we can get this money moving. The money doesn't help us when it sits in an account. It helps our residents when we spend it and make decisions that we can't replicate the money that comes from our, the county and the state and federal government. So I want to make sure that if we're coming up with recommendations, these are already pots of money that exist in the county, state, and federal government. Because it's very clear the legislation doesn't allow us to do things that are already, the county, state, and federal governments are already paying money for.
Hey, Mayor, I have one question.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say noted. Thank you, Councilman Aguirre. We did get that. We did get that noted. Thank you. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilman.
Um, I I have one, I have one question. Manager Hall, is it possible that we can crunch some of these numbers? And when the council and the mayor were all together, we can further discuss this and hopefully move towards a resolution? And could it be possibly done at the council retreat? Is that possible?
Councilman Leva Gonzalez, this is Manager Hall. I, we, I I think this discussion has been very helpful for staff. And what this will allow us to do now that we've gotten feedback, I I think each of you have provided some feedback that we can hone in now closer to what the council wants to be and can try to refine these numbers to get even closer. Again, there was, there was no intent to kind of sidestep this discussion or the public process. In fact, we were kind of hoping to have a live meeting tonight, right? But but this is going to help us to refine those numbers and come back to you with something I think that's a a little bit more consistent with what we're hearing from you guys. And we, and it's been very helpful. It was kind of a stab in the dark, but it was kind of to avoid the first meeting we normally have. Normally, we have a first meeting and there's about two hundred ideas thrown out on the table. What we tried to do was narrow those down to the items that seem to be supported by the Department of the Treasury. Because everybody's got a great idea, but but there are, there are some pretty you know, anytime you get money from the federal government, there's going to be strings attached. So what we tried to do is at least narrow the conversation down to those items that Imperial Beach appear to be consistent with the the funding guidelines that are provided by the Treasury. So I think we were able to do that. Now, our our percentages or allocations may have been off, but it, but even then, I think the items that staff included in the plan. I think we included the right items. It's whether or not we allocated the funding right. But I think what I'm hearing is we did allocate some money for business assistance. We we did for for family assistance. And we did for the essential workers and for recreation and and the one we did not, frankly, is food desert, but we've heard that tonight. And I do think that there's some ways to tie that to the to the funding. And we will explore that. So I think, again, our thought, like the mayor, I believe, said, our thought process was correct. Now it's just getting the allocations right. So so I'm glad that we we were kind of in line with the council on the thought process. Now we'll get the allocations right. We'll get on with this. And this is going to be a fantastic amazing investment in this community, no matter what we do. And we are, we are, we are so fortunate to be part of the government organization at this point in time to be able to have this opportunity to do something really cool in the community. And and I think we're all looking forward to that. And in the end, I'm confident that this group of council members and and the mayor, we're we're going to do some really cool things. And our residents are just going to really be the ones who benefit from this. And and so, yeah, this is, this is a really good day for us. And I think we've heard quite, quite a lot. And I think we can put something together that's a little bit more in line with what we're hearing from the council tonight. But I think we did identify the right items, just maybe the allocations can be modified a little.
Uh, great. Without, I think we move on then. Is that correct? City Manager Hall, just to make sure.
Yes, I'm sorry. I I muted myself. Yes, Mayor, there's, there's no motion needed on this. Again, you'll probably see some revisions and we'll bring this back to your next meeting. And if it takes a meeting or two, that's great, but we'll, we'll stay on top of it and get you guys something we can all feel good about real quick.
Okay. All right. We're going to go to, I think it's item number twelve. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. That is the, for everyone who may be listening at home. Earlier in the meeting, the council made a motion to remove item twelve from the consent calendar, which was a discussion of the date for the retreat, which we normally have early in the year, kind of January or February. But we have, we have delayed it quite a bit this year due to the COVID conditions. And so the council now is discussing a date when they can get together and have their annual retreat, which is kind of a goal-setting this discussion that they can have. So this, this ties in very well with what we're talking about with the previous item on the agenda. So, yes, Mayor, that's correct. This is item twelve.
You asked for this to be moved. You want to discuss?
Yeah, you know, what what I needed to do is just make, I I'm not available on the day that Blum had asked for. Just due to my work, my work schedule is a little hectic, but I I just want to make sure that we do get it down. And again, you know, it's like herding cats, trying to get all, all of us in the same room at the same time. But I think I I would imagine all of us agree that it's the right thing to do. Obviously, as a new council member, I've never been to to retreat, but I know it's an opportunity for us to to be together. I feel it's important that we do it in person if if possible. And so, you know, I think that that's, that's kind of my goal today is just hoping we can find a day. I can start to tell you, I I've looked at my calendar and it's not the only day, but the the soonest that I probably would be available would be I think it's Monday, September thirteenth, which is the week after Labor Day. Again, I work in a business that's tourism-driven and, you know, once people get back to school and things like that, I become a little bit more available and flexible with my schedule. So.
Well, could we have a motion that we just work with staff to coordinate calendars? Just fairly unusual to have it identified as one day that's best for one council member rather than the whole council. So is that, I I can't make it, yeah, through that second week of September. So maybe we could do that, have the staff work with our council and staff to figure out the most ideal day.
Well, and I'll, I I think that's fine. I swear, I think part of, part of my goal also is to make sure that it gets on there. I'll be honest. Twice in the last two months, I I somehow it was still on my calendar. I thought we had the retreat and I panicked. So I, again, I I agree that we could probably do it through city staff. I think we just do it sooner than later and and just kind of get it set if that's agreeable to.
Y'all want to share our our calendars with the public so we can all collectively look. Does that sound okay, everyone?
I'm good.
Is that a, so I made a minimal motion. Want to second that?
I'll second.
Right. Senator Kelly, can we take a vote?
Yes, Mister Mayor. There's been a motion by Dina, second by Spriggs, to work with staff with an ideal date for the retreat. Councilmember. I'm sorry, Councilmember Aguirre, how do you vote?
Can I, can I propose a friendly, just an amendment, adjustment to the proposition? So that we could, understanding that everybody has different calendars and that we need to work with staff. Can we at least narrow it down to a window of the first half of September? Or if you want, even narrow it down to a month? I think that that would be fair.
Well, yeah, I think September sounds fine. I think we just have to coordinate our calendars. This is what we normally do in a process. You know, you work with other people.
Yeah.
Staff to coordinate calendars. That's generally accepted business practice.
Yeah, thank you. That would be wonderful.
I think the record should show, you know, that we all want to have this retreat. I mean, the question is whether we do it in person or whether we can do it in person or whether we have to do it remotely. Again, retreats are not really set up for remote. So I think that's another question put to city staff in terms of the feasibility of doing it. You know, together in this time period, like within the next month or so, month and a half, which would cover the first half of Sep- of September.
Yeah, we could always do it outside. So if we can't, you know, we can't be inside, maybe we do it outside as well. So that's, that's always an option.
All right. Well, that's, that's, that's on the table. Good.
Retreat in the park, Shakespeare in the park, retreat in the park. But I agree with you. I think that's, it's, it would be problematic, you know, if we're going to be in a room for three hours all together, potentially with the public and staff. I think that's, you know, that may maybe the delta variant will be less, you know, than or something. So we just have to see.
I'm sorry. I think the vote was being, the roll call was being called. So my vote is yes for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember Leva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Um, yes, I support that.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Dina.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. Before we turn, we have, I know we have a couple of public comments.
Yes, Mister Mayor. Yes. The first comment, this one somehow got missed in all the messages. But it was from Leah Goodwin, and she was in support of item number eleven under consent calendar. And she says, this is a great event for our youth. Thank you. And the final comment is from Iback Eric Gutierrez. And he says, we at Imperial Beach Athletic Club would like to thank the city of Imperial Beach, the port of the Port District, our sponsors, and the citizens for their support of our club. In the last four years, we at Iback have had amazing success in our beautiful city. We realize that the success has a lot to do with so many of our supporters. A few things that we been able to this year is give money to youth sports, give bikes away. been able to this year is give money to youth sports, give bikes away, cleanups around town, start a scholarship program at Mar Vista High School and even got lunch to a handful of city groups. The amount is very close to nine thousand dollars. For the rest of the year, we we still have a few events, a cornhole tournament, adults and kids, horseshoe tournament, O T L tournament, poker tournament and a food drive, a food toy drive. Thanks again for your support of us, Iback President Eric Gutierrez. And Mr. Mayor, that's the final comment.
Great, well, thank you, and thanks to Iback for all their great work, and thanks, everybody, I think that's it, right? Nothing else, City Coach Kelly?
Nothing left on the agenda that there is closer.
Great, have a great evening, everybody, thanks.